Okay, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call today's Temecula City Council's special meeting to order at exactly 10 o'clock. May we, let's go ahead and start with a flag salute. I'll go ahead and lead that. Will you all please join me in saluting our flag? Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Madam Deputy City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Kelfis.
Here.
Mayor Schwenk.
I'm here.
And Mayor Portem Stewart.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
Yes, we do. We have one public comment, and that would be Ed Duel.
Okay, welcome.
My name is Ed Duel, resident here of Temecula since 1989, property owner, merchant, and developer down here in Old Town. And just kind of wanted to introduce myself to the council and just kind of give a real brief couple of seconds about our Old Town. As a lot of you know, especially our senior Mr. Stewart here, our city, you know, used to be just an antique row that closed up at 5:00 and not really too much happening down here. But our city at that time, they went forward with the Kaiser Marsden Report, '94. We put a plan together to revitalize Old Town. Kaiser Marsden, the same people that did that study, were the people that put together the Gaslight District down in San Diego, and turned out to be real good. Of course, time has changed, and here we are with a lot, a lot of night people coming in, a lot of tourists, and our merchants. We used to have, you know, one of our council people, at least once a quarter, got together with our Old Town merchants, kind of explained to them kind of where we were coming from, what we needed, what we didn't need, and sort of like get to know each other. And that's kind of, I'd like to set the tune that maybe in forward, we could do that a little more. We've got our new metro team, which is doing real good the past few weeks. Although, I was out in Palm Desert this weekend and had a chance to go into one of their casinos and look at their law enforcement there, which happens to be our sheriffs, and was very impressed. They were all dressed in their Class A uniforms. They looked real nice, very polite to everybody, and I like to kind of see that in hopefully today's meeting and here in the future, we can get together a little bit more with our council, our sheriffs, and our Old Town merchants. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any more public comments?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go ahead and move to our first item, conduct a public hearing in the matter of the revocation of the conditional use permit for the operation of the bank and consider proposed decision of the Office of Administrative Hearing Officer and confirmation of decision by the Planning Commission. Let me go ahead and read the rules for the public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before a public hearing or may appear or be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of a project at the time of the hearing. If you challenge a project in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the city clerk or by submitting an email to be included in the record. Email comments must be submitted to councilcomments@temeculac.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. At public hearings involved land use matters, the property owner and/or applicant has the burden of proof and therefore shall be allowed 15 minutes for an initial presentation and an additional 10 minutes for rebuttal by the development team following other comments on the matter. An appellant other than the property owner and/or applicant and the spokesperson for an organized group of residents residing within the notice area of the property, which is subject of the public hearing, shall be allowed 15 minutes to present the appellant's position to the council. The mayor may allow more time if required to provide due process for the property owner, applicant, or appellant. All other members of the public may speak during the public hearing for a maximum period of five minutes each. Referral of one speaker's time to another is not permitted. In the event of a large number of speakers, the mayor may reduce the maximum time limit for members of the public to speak. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. And at this time, we will call the attorney for the city to present their case. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes.
This CUP revocation has a little different time restrictions than the normal public hearing. So what we have agreed upon is that the city will have a total of 45 minutes to present its position, and it can retain any portion of that for rebuttal. After the city presents, then the bank will have 45 minutes, represented by Mr. Pennman here this morning. Then Zip Third will have 45 minutes as well. Neither of those parties get any rebuttal time. Then we will have some public comment after the city's rebuttal, and then we will give each of the parties five minutes to respond to that. So it is a little different, so I just thought I'd clarify that for the public.
Okay, I appreciate that. And what we'll do from a council perspective up here is we'll take all the oral arguments, and then we're going to take just a brief five-minute break, and then we'll come back and finish the day. So, go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Jennifer Petrusis, and I represent city staff in these proceedings before you The purpose of this hearing is for the city council to consider whether to uphold the Planning Commission's decision to revoke the conditional use permit that was granted to the bank restaurant. Now to quickly introduce this matter, city staff seeks to revoke the CUP after issuing over 100 citations and civil penalties over the course of 17 months for violations that the bank admits to committing. As part of the revocation matter, an administrative law judge with the California State Office of Administrative Hearings heard all of the evidence offered by the city, by the owners of the restaurant, by the property owner, which is Zip Third Investments LLC, and also heard comments by the public, and decided that the CUP should be revoked. On February 15, 2023, the Planning Commission held a hearing pursuant to the municipal code and decided to confirm the administrative law judge's decision revoking the CUP. Respondents appealed the Planning Commission's decision, which brings this matter before you here this morning. Now, this isn't a full evidentiary hearing. The parties will not be offering any new evidence at this hearing. Pursuant to the municipal code, the council shall only consider the evidence that was presented at the revocation hearing before the administrative law judge and at the Planning Commission hearing, and any new evidence offered by members of the public here today. To sum up the city's position, given the evidence of 17 months' worth of undisputed violations of the CUP, including admitted violations of its operating hours, admitted violations of the approved hours to sell alcohol, undisputed excessive noise violations, and evidence that the bank had become a disorderly house in violation of its CUP, the city council should uphold the Planning Commission's decision to revoke the CUP. So I'd like to next give you an overview or a roadmap for my presentation. I'm first going to discuss the history of the CUP that's at issue that was requested by and issued to the bank restaurant. I'm then going to discuss the specific violations, the timeline of those violations over the course of 17 months, and the many, many citations and civil penalties that were issued by city staff to the bank. I'm then going to explain that city staff has complied with all of the necessary requirements under the municipal code for this revocation. I'm then going to discuss the hearing that was before the administrative law judge, the evidence that was presented, and the decision reached by that administrative law judge to revoke the CUP. And finally, based on the evidence presented at the hearing before the ALJ and in consideration of the public comments made at the February 15 Planning Commission hearing, the Planning Commission decided to confirm the ALJ's decision to revoke the CUP. Next, a little bit of history about the CUP at issue this morning. So to begin, in November 2007, Craig Puma of CNC Puma Corporation, which is the owner and operator of the bank restaurant, applied for a minor conditional use permit for use by the bank restaurant. And in January 2008, the planning director approved PA 07-0314. Now, the purpose of the CUP was to upgrade from a Type 41 ABC license, which allows the sale of beer and wine, to a Type 47 license, so that the bank could then sell distilled spirits. Later that year, Mr. Puma sought to modify the CUP in order to extend the hours for the sale of and consumption of alcohol. And the planning director, or I'm sorry, the planning department approved PA 08-0236. Through this modification, the restaurant manager could decide to stay open past regular hours until 2:00 a.m., and on those instances, alcoholic beverages could be served until 2:00 a.m. with the last call of 1:30 a.m. A few years later, in 2012, Mr. Puma again requested to modify his CUP, this time so that he could have certain live entertainment at the restaurant, and the planning department approved that. That was PA 12-0041. However, as part of this approved minor modification of the CUP, the conditions of approval changed the operating hours. There was no longer a provision permitting the restaurant to stay open until 2:00 a.m. Now, the bank argued at the administrative hearing and also before the Planning Commission that the hours must have been changed in error. That's not the case. They attribute this to a cut-and-paste error made by staff. But, planning manager Stuart Fisk testified at the administrative hearing before the ALJ that he was involved in the issuance of this 2012 minor modification, and that the director of planning at the time told him he would only approve the 2012 minor modification application if the hours of operation were set back to those of the 2007 CUP. So, the hours set forth in the 2012 conditions of approval are not in error. They were purposely selected, and they were not appealed. The bank also argued that the hours could not have been changed because Mr. Puma never requested that the hours be changed. This is of no moment. The city was able to modify the operating hours as a condition of approving Mr. Puma's request to modify his CUP. And again, Mr. Puma did not appeal the conditions of approval. So to be clear, there is only one CUP at issue in this proceeding. It is 07-0314, which has been modified twice at the request of Mr. Puma. The final conditions of approval for the 2012 modification are the current conditions of approval, and they supersede the previous provision that the restaurant could stay open until 2:00 a.m. So I'd like to now go over some important provisions of the current conditions of approval for the CUP. The approved operating hours are contained in Condition Number 12, and that's at page 113 of your agenda packet. The restaurant must close by 10:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday and on Sundays, and at 11:00 p.m. on Fridays and Saturdays. That's pursuant to the current conditions of approval. The approved hours for sale of alcohol are also in Condition Number 12, and they require the sale of alcohol to cease by 10:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday and on Sundays, and at 11:00 p.m. on Fridays and Saturdays. And the consumption of alcohol must cease one hour after these closing hours. The bank can have indoor entertainment consisting only of one keyboard or other instrument played with one vocalist for the purpose of providing background music from noon until 10:00, and that's contained in Condition Number 9. This is the only live entertainment that the restaurant is permitted to have, according to their CUP. And according to Condition Number 28(c), the licensed premises must not become a disorderly house. Now, a disorderly house is defined as a licensed outlet that disturbs neighbors with noise, loud music, loitering, littering, vandalism, urination, defecation, graffiti, et cetera, and/or has many ongoing crimes inside or in the parking lot, such as drunks, fights, assaults, prostitution, narcotics, narcotics, et cetera. As part of its normal process, staff notified Mr. Puma about his right to appeal the conditions of approval. That letter is at page 111 of your packet. If Mr. Puma wasn't happy with the conditions of approval, including the operating hours, he had 15 days from the date of approval to appeal. It is undisputed that Mr. Puma did not appeal the conditions of approval. The city first became aware of the bank operating outside of its approved hours when staff received a complaint from the Temecula Police Department. The police department noticed problems related to over-service of alcohol at the bank restaurant that resulted in disturbances caused by fights and public intoxication. So, Code Enforcement Field Supervisor Tom Cole began walking with police officers in the Old Town as part of the metro team, and he personally observed the bank operating outside of its approved operating hours and serving alcohol past those approved hours. Mr. Cole also observed customers of the bank falling down from intoxication and vomiting, and he observed individuals picking fights with the Temecula police officers, and all of this was happening after 11:00 p.m., which was their approved closing hours. The Temecula Police Department also noticed that on many occasions, individuals stopped for public intoxication and arrested for driving under the influence, told those officers that they had been coming from the bank. The police department observed several assaults per night happening in front of the deputies and in front of the bank, and they observed security guards pushing individuals who were fighting out away from the bank. Most of these incidents occurred after 11:00 p.m., and Law Enforcement Sergeant Hepner testified that a vast majority occurred closer to between midnight and 2:00 a.m., long past their approved operating hours. As you know, in January 2022, there was a shooting at the bank that occurred after the restaurant should have been closed. It should have been closed that Sunday night at 10:00 p.m. The shooting victim was a former security guard of the restaurant. He had a felony conviction while he worked at the bank, and during his time at the bank, he violently assaulted a customer, causing that customer to become hospitalized. A few months earlier than that shooting, there was another shooting in November of 2021, and it occurred when patrons of the bank who were celebrating a birthday got into a verbal altercation. In that shooting occurred, Sergeant Hepner testified about 50 to 100 feet down the sidewalk on Main Street. Mr. Cole also determined that the bank was violating the city's noise ordinance, and he used a decibel reader to take noise readings. The permitted noise level in Old Town is 70 decibels. Mr. Cole checked noise levels from an adjacent property to the bank pursuant to the municipal code while a DJ was observed playing after approved hours, and that level was 95 on numerous occasions. Speaking about that live entertainment, the bank is permitted to have indoor dinner entertainment consisting, again, of one keyboard or other instrument and one vocalist to provide background music. However, the bank had a DJ with speakers pointed into the street intersection, producing loud and excessive noise in violation of the city's noise ordinance and in excess of what live entertainment was permitted by the CUP. The CUP did not permit the bank to have a DJ. Beginning in March 2021, Code Enforcement started issuing citations to the bank for violating the approved operating hours beyond 11:00 p.m. and for having excessive noise levels with outside speakers in violation of the CUP and in violation of the municipal code. Mr. Cole issued 34 citations between March and July of 2021. The violations continued. So pursuant to the municipal code, Mr. Cole began issuing civil penalty letters, which have a higher fine amount. He issued 109 civil penalty letters between July 2021 up until we had the hearing before the administrative law judge in August of 2022, so for over a year. These citations and civil penalties were issued to Brad Landon, who is the registered agent for service of process for CNC Puma Corporation. Now, the city issued the citations and civil penalties to the entity it considered to be the responsible person for causing and maintaining the violations, which is the owner of the restaurant. And this comports with the municipal code definition of responsible person that is found in Section 1.21020. The bank continued to violate the CUP for over a year before the city initiated a revocation action. On August 20, 2021, Mr. Cole sent a notice to Zip Third Investments LLC, that's the owner of the real property at which the bank is located, to let it know that its tenant, the bank, was violating the Temecula Municipal Code, including that it was operating in violation of its permissible operating hours. A copy of that letter is at page 265 of your packet. Mr. Cole never received a response from Zip Third. Zip Third was then sent copies of each of the civil penalty letters that were issued to the bank. Mr. Cole sent 97 civil penalty letters to Zip Third, using the address for Zip Third that is listed with the California Secretary of State. And Norman Solomon, the principal of Zip Third, testified that this Wilshire Boulevard address is the correct address for Zip Third. None of these letters were ever returned to the city as undeliverable. No person from Zip Third ever contacted city staff in response to these letters. All told, staff issued over 100 citations and civil penalties over the course of 17 months. The bank continued to violate the CUP even up until the hearing before the administrative law judge in August of 2022. Now I'd like to talk about the bank's and Zip Third's reaction. Craig Puma, and again, his company is CNC Puma Corporation, which owns the restaurant, was aware of the citations. Amanda Lane is the president and CEO of that corporation, and it's my understanding she's the day-to-day manager of the bank, and she was also aware of the citations. Both of them contacted Luke Watson to claim that the operating hours in the CUP were incorrect. Mr. Watson testified that he explained to each of them what the allowed operating hours were and that they must file a minor modification application to change those approved hours. And in fact, Mr. Puma testified that Mr. Watson provided him with the currently approved operating hours. The bank never applied for a minor modification to change its operating hours. Certainly, Mr. Puma knew how to navigate that minor modification process. He had done that twice before. No one ever appealed any of the citations or any of the civil penalties. Additionally, Mr. Cole had several conversations with Ms. Lane over an 18-month period regarding the bank's violations of approved operating hours. Ms. Lane never told Mr. Cole that she was going to comply, and so Mr. Cole continued to issue citations and civil penalties. And incredibly, the violations continued to occur even after the planning director sent notice that he was recommending revocation of the CUP. City staff really had no other choice than to bring this revocation action. City staff has complied with the procedure set forth in the municipal code to revoke the CUP. Section 17.03.085 sets out this process by which the city may revoke a CUP, and copies of those sections can be found in your agenda packet at page 69. It begins with the planning director sending a notice to the permit holder and to the city clerk that explains that he is recommending that the CUP be revoked. During testimony before the administrative law judge, both the bank and Zip Third testified that they received this notice. The next step in the process is to have a public hearing before an independent hearing officer, and as I mentioned, that hearing was held before an administrative law judge from the Office of Administrative Hearings. The ALJ received oral and written evidence from all of the parties, heard testimony from Luke Watson, from Tom Cole, from Sergeant Hepner of the Temecula Police Department, and from planning manager Stuart Fisk regarding the violations. The ALJ also heard from the owners and operators of the bank and from a representative of Zip A particular note from that hearing before the ALJ. The owner/operators admitted to operating the restaurant until 2:00 a.m. Ms. Lane testified that the bank typically closes at 2:00 a.m. on Fridays and Saturdays, and that on Sundays, it typically closes between 10:00 and midnight. This is a violation of the conditions of approval. They admitted to selling alcohol past the approved hours in the conditions of approval. They admitted to having a live DJ that will perform up until 1:00 a.m., depending on the day. Ms. Lane admitted to having drag show performances at the restaurant. During the hearing, a private investigator retained by the city testified that he went to the bank on July 10, 2022, which is after the planning director sent notice that he is recommending revocation of the CUP. That investigator observed the bank continuing to operate and sell alcohol after 11:00 p.m. Notably, when the investigator went outside of the restaurant to take noise level readings, he was approached by two security guards from the restaurant who threatened to beat him up if he didn't turn over his phone. They had apparently seen the investigator taking photographs while inside the restaurant. The ALJ heard evidence of 17 months' worth of violations, and that these violations continued even after the city notified the bank that it intended to seek revocation of the CUP. As to Zip Third, Ms. Lane testified at that administrative hearing that she spoke with Zip Third's property manager in July 2021 about the citations. Zip Third's property manager in July 2021 about the citations. Zip Third's property manager was on notice about the citations over a year before we had the administrative hearing. Mr. Solomon of Zip Third testified that his office had received some of the civil penalties sent to his office. He admits to receiving at least sixteen violation letters, the earliest dated March seventh, 2022. Of course, it is city staff's position that all ninety-seven civil penalty letters were sent to Zip Third, none of which were returned. But at the very least, Zip Third was on notice of the violations in March 2022, which was five months before the hearing while the violations continued. Based on the evidence presented by all of the parties, the ALJ decided that the city had demonstrated by clear and convincing evidence that CNC Puma Corporation frequently and continuously violated the approved conditions of approval. Specifically, the ALJ found that the bank violated conditions twelve by continually operating outside of its approved hours, that it violated condition twelve by selling alcohol to customers beyond the permitted hours, that it violated condition nine by having live entertainment beyond that was permitted by the CUP, and that it violated condition twenty-eight C by becoming a disorderly house. The bank argued that it didn't realize the approved hours had changed in the last modification that it had requested. Notably, the bank, however, continued to violate the conditions of approval even after it became aware of the modified hours. And again, the bank never appealed the citations or civil penalties, nor did it ever apply for a minor modification. The ALJ also found that the bank had created loud noise beyond what was permitted by the municipal code, and that law enforcement had established that the bank had become a disorderly house. The Planning Commission conducted a proper hearing just recently on February fifteenth, 2023. The commissioners noted that they had reviewed the evidence, and they heard presentations from the parties and comments by the members of the public. And the Planning Commission decided to confirm the ALJ's decision to revoke the CUP, and it adopted resolution 2023 dash zero four. The council should uphold the revocation of the CUP. The city complied with the requirements of the municipal code for the revocation of the CUP. The parties have participated in a fair evidentiary hearing. The decision of the ALJ was automatically reviewed by the Planning Commission, which conducted its own hearing. We are not talking about a few isolated incidents of violations. What we have here is a restaurant that for over a year and a half refused to comply with the conditions of approval for its CUP. No doubt, the bank will argue that it cannot operate under the current conditions of approval, but it will not provide any explanation as to why it never appealed any of the citations or civil penalties, or why it has never sought to modify the conditions of approval through the proper process. It's because they didn't want to. They wanted to continue to operate however they wanted to operate. City staff was left with no other option than to bring this revocation matter. As the ALJ determined and as the Planning Commission confirmed, the city has met its burden of establishing violations of the CUP. And respectfully, the council should uphold the revocation of the CUP. And I'd like to use the rest of my time for possible rebuttal.
Great, thank you very much. Before we move on, are there any questions of counsel from my colleagues?
Do you have one question?
Okay, quickly.
Maybe I missed this. Did they pay all of those violations?
They paid some of them. They didn't pay all of them.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. So with over a hundred violations, had they responded to one violation, what's the city's process on that response? What would be the city's process on that response?
The city would have insisted on compliance with the conditions of approval. So the goal is to obtain voluntary compliance, that through citations and civil penalties, the bank will start to comply with its conditions of approval. And of course, if they need information about how to modify the CUP, they certainly could have obtained that from staff and started that process.
So to my colleague's point, they paid the citations, but they never contacted the city about how to improve the situation there at the bank?
I believe they—
Or correct?
I apologize. I believe they did contact the city, and city staff confirmed for them what the approved operating hours were. Now, during the administrative hearing, Ms. Lane testified that essentially she was hoping that this misunderstanding with the hours would be corrected, but city staff never represented to her that she could continue to operate outside of the operating hours.
And that's a hundred, over a hundred citations.
Over a hundred.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, and I have nothing either. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I would like to call the attorney for CNC Puma Corporation, the bank and restaurant owner, Attorney James Pennman, to the podium.
Is there a timer somewhere?
It just started.
I see it now. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. My name is James Pennman, Jim. It was my privilege for twenty-six years to be the elected city attorney for the city of San Bernardino. And I am very familiar with this type of a case. Our office was involved in a number of them. When the owners of CNC Puma, the bank, first came to me for consultation, I will admit that in the back of my mind, I thought, well, here's another business that got closed by a city because they weren't following the rules. I'll look over the information, and when I'm done, I thought I'll probably be advising them that you really aren't going to be able to get anywhere with this, because the city has a right to enforce its ordinances, and the city has a right to revoke a conditional use permit if a business becomes a house of ill repute or disorderly. And I talked with them. I went through the evidence. I went through the transcripts of the hearing before the administrative law judge. And quite frankly, I ended up being surprised, given the state of the record, that this particular situation had reached the point that it did where the planning director recommended a revocation of the CUP. And I'd like now to go over what it was that I found out that caused me to mentally change my position, because after hearing the excellent presentation by Ms. Petrusis, if I thought that everything she said was precisely accurate, I would be inclined, if I was up there voting, to perhaps vote to uphold the revocation myself. This is what I found out. In making the recommendation to revoke the conditional use permit of CNC Puma, the planning director, Mr. Watson, did so based on a great deal of incorrect information that was provided to him. That incorrect information was later submitted to the administrative law judge. I was not involved in the case at that point. And then to the city planning commission, where I did become involved. One of the first things was the belief that the murder that occurred at the bank, January ninth, 2022, could have been prevented by the restaurant owners, and a belief that a second shooting a block away from the bank involved patrons who had just left the bank, and a belief that numerous incidents of police calls to the bank were indications of poor management and poor security at the bank. As stated by the city attorney at the hearing before the administrative law judge, the bank has violated the city's noise standards, and there have been many crimes, assaults, fights, public intoxication, and shootings have been occurred or connected with the bank and how it's operated. But I learned, reading all of the evidence, going through the calls for service at the bank, that most of this information was incorrect. The planning director's explanation that consistent in ongoing violations of the hours of operation for more than a year ignored the fact that those violations ceased, according to testimony of two city officials, in 2021, about a year before the revocation hearing was held by the administrative law judge. And that was somewhat confusing, because the city planner testified that the process of the city of Temecula is to work with property owners, to discuss situations with them, and to bring them into compliance. And once they come into compliance, which is the goal Mr. Watson testified to, then it's okay. But yet, about a year after they came into compliance on the noise violations, suddenly there's a recommendation to revoke their CUP. This seems somewhat inconsistent. The bank applied on October ninth, 2008, and received a minor modification allowing them to stay open until 2:00 AM. And that's in the transcripts, which is part of the evidence that you have. On February second, 2012, the bank applied for another minor modification to allow live entertainment. That was granted, but the staff cut and pasted the hours from the original CUP in 2007, which had the effect of legally reverting the closing back to much earlier than 2:00 This was not noticed by the owner, Mr. Puma, at the time. He had applied for a modification only so he could have live entertainment. How do we know that it was an accident? I suggest there are three ways we can look at that. Two thousand and seven, the bank had a type forty-one liquor license allowing only the sale of beer and wine. Two thousand and eight, they upgraded to a type forty-seven license, which allowed the sale of hard liquor. But the 2012 CUP lists them as still having a type forty-one instead of a type forty-seven, even though that was changed in 2008. How did the staff miss that? It's because the staff cut and pasted the language from the original CUP in 2007 into the modification in 2012. That's what caused the hours to be reduced, because in 2007, they did have to close earlier. The conditions of approval in the 2007 application were discussed in email exchanges between planning director Luke Watson and planner Stuart Fisk. Mr. Fisk says in the 2000—this is all from the transcript before the ALJ—2012 application, they requested to go into 1:00 AM, but we only allowed for live entertainment with that application and did not extend the hours. No, that is not what that application applied for. It applied for live entertainment, not to change the hours. The bank's reference to closing at 1:00 AM in the application was on a line for operating hours, not for a request to change. They were stating the time that they actually closed. There was no discussion of changing the hours in the record at all on the 2012 application. Information on that only produced the hearing before—is only produced the hearing before the ALJ, and Mr. Fisk tried to explain away the error. And he did so in a very surprising manner, and I believe his testimony—if you look at the record, you'll see it's suspect, if you look at the transcript. When questioned before the ALJ by Mr. Edwards, Mr. Fisk was asked about the fact that the condition about the hours being reduced for operations bank restaurant. He made it very clear during cross-examination that he had bolded the reduced hours part of the modified CUP. In other words, he, Mr. Fisk, in 2012, at that time, bolded the hours. During a follow-up question, he reaffirmed he had bolded it during the 2012 modification. I bolded it. But when he was questioned further, and when he looked back at the record, and when he looked at the 2008 modification, he admitted he had cut and pasted the hours from the original conditional use permit, and that was when the bolding occurred, because the original modification, the hours were bolded. So when he testified that he had bolded them in 2012, he gave false testimony. But he corrected that at the hearing, volume two, September one, 2022, pages two sixty-nine to two seventy-four. And he said, yes, I cut and pasted it, even though he just testified that he had not done That fact, plus the inconsistent emails, which I'm going to share with you, brings into question whether Mr. Richardson ever told him, the planning director at the time in 2012, to reduce the hours. Mr. Fisk's testimony is also contradicted by the email exchange between Fisk and Watson on January nineteen, 2021. Watson emailed Fisk saying, this email from planner Rubedo to Watson is what the city officially has on the books. And Watson emailed Rubedo, this can't be the most up-to-date, can it? It's in Exhibit H of the hearing, pages four and five. Same day, at 4:45 PM, emailed Fisk to Watson. Fisk emails back, I don't recall taking anything to hearing to modify the hours. Are you recalling something? Watson, expressing surprise, responds, no, just the closing hours are so early. Well, of course, Watson thought that. I mean, you just—you know, you've given him a modification from a type forty-one to a type forty-seven, allowing him to sell hard liquor, then you reduce the hours back to 10:00 PM? Doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Subsequently, in this saga of events, Jamie Cardenas with the city denied having a copy of the 2008 minor modification, which changed the closing hours from 11:00 PM on Fridays, Saturdays, and holidays to 2:00 PM. That's on page one forty, lines fourteen to sixteen, Minor Modification, 2008, Exhibit One—or Exhibit I, excuse me. Cardenas also told Lane that section one twenty-eight of the 2012 CUP says, it shows you can't be open till 2:00 AM. And Lane testified, there were many errors on the 2012 minor modification that were made by the city, and we just wanted it corrected. I mean, it was an honest mistake of copying the wrong one, because that's what actually happened, and the record shows that. More explanation. Cardenas told Lane, they went from one program to another, meaning computer, and they changed programs. They lost a bunch of documents. And obviously, since Cardenas couldn't find the 2008 modification, that's one of the ones that was lost. September twenty-eighth, 2021, email exchange between Lane and Elsa Wiggle, fire marshal, which Wiggle told Lane she had gone through the bank's files, and the only CUP modifications and minor modifications she was able to find were the PA-07, PA-09, and PA-12. Why couldn't she find the PA-08? Craig Puma, partner at CNC Puma, testified he became—when he became aware of the city, said it had no record of the 2008 minor modification. He contacted the ABC office, Angela Revels, and guess what? ABC had a copy of the city's 2008 minor modification in their records, and they provided that to Puma on an email dated March third, 2021. And they provided that to Puma on an email dated March 3rd, 2021, and he then provided it to the city. So all of a sudden, the city again had a copy of its own 2008 modification, which apparently during a change in programming had been lost. In that email to Mr. Watson, Puma said, I'm not sure why you don't have these conditions in the file on the bank. The third reason, despite the city saying the CUP was changed in 2012 to only permit the bank to remain open until 11:00 PM on Fridays, Saturdays, and holidays, and this is crucial, the city did not start enforcing the alleged closing time until February of 2021. Nine years after the city now claims the minor modification of the CUP in 2012 required the bank to close at 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 11:00 PM on Fridays, Saturdays, and holidays. And this is even though the Fire Marshal inspects the premises on an annual basis, and even though city employees and officials frequented the restaurant during those nine years, including many after 11:00 PM on Fridays and Saturdays. A city attorney, I would, looked at this and said, city was on constructive notice for nine years that this restaurant was staying open until 2:00 PM. If there was a problem, why didn't, why did they wait nine years before they started enforcing it? Moving on to the testimony of Sergeant Joshua Hepner. Sergeant Pearson, he testified, told me that overseeing at the bank, there were more DUIs and fights, and also told him security at the bank is a little heavy-handed. Regarding the homicide that occurred on January 9th, 2022, involving an ex-bouncer at the bank who was murdered there, he said, I was not working that evening, but I was briefed on the incident. There was a disturbance between patrons and the patio. Multiple subjects of what looks like was between two males escalated to one of them pulling a handgun and shooting at the other as he began to run away. Problem with that is, the security tape of that evening at the bank, there were two cameras, showed there was no altercation leading up. Everybody was talking. Seconds before the one guy pulled the gun, there was what you might consider to be a disagreement.
Would you be able to speak to that for us?
If I could argue on that, that comes from page...
Hold on one second. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I think what we should do is let Mr. Pennman finish his comments. I'm happy to rule on that objection at that time, and we can have some potential argument about the validity of it. Indeed, the video that he is referring to is not in evidence. So it's simply argument that he is making, but it is not in evidence.
Okay.
But we can say a little more about that after he concludes.
Okay, go ahead and conclude.
Okay, thank you. The sergeant's testimony comes from page 198, lines 24 and 25, and page 199. But according to other testimony, and this is in the record, where he was talking about incidents at the bank and the security being heavy-handed, subject was putting a camera under girls' skirts, and the security guard asked him to leave. He complained to a police officer that he was physically injured. Officer Baumann came, looked at the video, and said the security guard did nothing wrong. Sergeant Hepner testified, he believed the security guard was on probation. He did not say parole, which he would have been had it been a felony conviction. And he believed they were felonies, but he said, I don't have his criminal history in front of me. Testifying about the other shooting that they said was near the bank, that one occurred near the bank, there were patrons who were there. I don't recall if they'd been drinking or not, however, someone that was with a group of the bank got into some verbal altercation with someone else, and it moved outside. First, he said it was in the parking lot, then he said it was about 100 feet away. But other testimony showed that the bank's homeowner refused entry to those involved in the November 2021 shooting. The bank showed the film of the suspects being turned away to the officers, and after the officers saw the video, they said, okay, they were never in there. That's in transcript, volume 2, page 116 and 117. Sergeant Hepner testified that after the homicide in January, he arrested a convicted felon outside the bank for carrying a loaded gun on January 13 during a candlelight vigil for the homicide victim. However, other testimony established the bank was closed the day of that vigil, January 13, 2022. Sergeant Hepner testified the security guards at the bank were not licensed and some had criminal records. Other testimony says they'd all been licensed since the city required them to be, which was not until July 31, 2022. The owners were not aware of any criminal records, and that was not what the officers they talked to told them. That's all in the transcript. Sergeant Hepner testified that a security guard, his name he believed was Venom, and that Venom refused to tell deputies what he had witnessed the day of the November 2021 shooting. Hepner went on to testify that he was uncooperative, wouldn't provide information. He further testified that the name Venom, like snake venom, is a moniker, and when he hears their security guards, the nicknames and monikers, the first thing that comes to mind, they have a gang background, they don't want people to know their real names. Says, I don't want to assume that. That's what it appeared based upon the actions. But subsequent testimony revealed the man's nickname was not Venom, but Virus, and he had that name because he was an artist. Transcript, volume 2, page 118. One other security guard who had a moniker, as categorized by Sergeant Hepner, was named Eagle, and he was Native American, and he was given that nickname by his father. Sergeant Hepner's assumptions were, in this case, perfectly valid for a police officer. I would agree with him from my years as chairman of the Police Commission in San Bernardino before I became city attorney. I can see why I thought that way, but the evidence showed he was, he was wrong. It wasn't Venom, it was Virus. As to the list of the incidents involving DUIs, fighting, and other disorderly events, testimony demonstrated those calls for service attributed to the bank were not really connected to the bank. Among them, the owner of a vehicle reported stolen from a parking lot that did not belong to the bank, came into the bank crying that her car had been stolen. Bank staff called the police for her, and that was listed as a call of service related to the bank. That was on July 3rd, 2021. A suspicious circumstance call related to the bank on August 1, 21, was recalled by a bank staffer because that was her birthday, so she knew the date. We were open, and nothing happened that day. An older homeless man was outside the bank yelling and swearing. He was known to the police. The bank staff called the police. Police responded, and it was charged to the bank as an incident occurring at the bank. There were numerous other calls for services attributed to the bank, saying, but they also say no reports generated. What does that mean? I know as a former police commissioner, as a city attorney, that that means the officers showed up, they observed nothing to justify the call, if those calls were listed to the bank. All of this was evidence, Mr. Watson considered. All of this was evidence that the ALJ considered. All of this was evidence the Planning Commission considered, and all of this is in the evidence in the transcripts that you're being asked to consider. As to the list of the bank's calls for services, which is CFS in Exhibit A, bank is listed as having had 40, but the stampede had 63. Adelaide, 48. Bailey's, 27. Blackbird, 29. So the events attributed to the bank are significantly less than the evidence shows other venues there having more calls for service than the bank. Planning Director Luke Watson testified, we have a very well-worn philosophy for code enforcement. That is, we are not there to cite or take a heavy hand. We first talk with the owners, talk with the business owners, try to educate them, and make sure that we are all understanding what the rules are, what the conditions are, and work collaboratively begin with. That is certainly not what took place here. He says, we're looking for voluntary compliance, and if we don't get it, then we issue a notice of violations. We're trying to work with them and be business-friendly to get them to come into compliance with the conditions of approval. And if that doesn't work, we move administrative citations. That will go on for some time to gain compliance. If that doesn't work, civil penalties. Well, yeah, they issued a heck of a lot of noise violations, but the bank came into compliance over a year before the revocation. Tom Cole, field supervisor of the City of Temecula, testified, the ultimate purpose of any violation is compliance. It is strictly used to achieve compliance. It is a tool. Despite those explanations, Mr. Watson, when asked why the city stopped issuing those noise violations to the bank on July 12, 2021, responded, probably because they stopped violating code and the conditions of approval at that point in 2021. We're in 2023, and you're being asked to revoke largely based on all these noise violations which stopped July 12, 2021. Similarly, when Tom Cool, Tom Cole, excuse me, I'm sure he is Cool, testified if he knew why the bank was cited for those violations after July 3rd, 2021, that's that date on Watson's, it was July 12, 2021, Cole replied, yes, I do. They turned their music down and took their speakers from being outside. Question, and that was the result of you speaking with somebody there at the bank? Cole's answer, I believe so. How long after that conversation was the problem abated? Cole's answer, I believe following week, maybe taken a couple of weeks. Do you believe the problem has been resolved? Cole's answer, yes, I do. So since the bank came into compliance on the noise violation in July 2021, and if the purpose of citations is strictly to achieve compliance, as Watson and Cole testified, why is the city's noise ordinance being issued as a reason to revoke the CUP to the ALJ, to the Planning Commission, and to you? In response to the question, can you describe the specific instances or incidents, crimes that occurred at the bank? Watson testified, the first was in November 2021, which was the first of two shootings associated with patrons of the bank. That's one where the video that the officers looked at showed that the bouncer turned the people away that were involved in the shooting. Watson also testified that the shooting was not in the bank, it was adjacent to the bank. Other testimony shows over about half a block down from the bank. He also testified, my understanding, talking to the police department, is in a parking lot directly behind the bank. Isn't so. There's a parking lot directly behind the bank, which is not owned by the bank. This was in a parking lot across the street, further down. He went on to testify, the PD told me they were at the bank. I don't know if they were at the bank drinking. Watson was then asked, do you know of anything the bank could have done that they didn't do that would have prevented the shooting? He responded, closed on time. How would that have had any impact? Answer, maybe they all wouldn't have been there. But you don't know that. Well, no. You just asked me if I thought there was anything they could do. Okay, other than that, anything else? Watson, no. There's nothing the bank could have done. You said earlier, there were a number of crimes that happened and are near the bank. Is that correct? Watson answered, yes. Question, how close is something must be to the bank for you to believe it's close enough to be their fault? Watson's answer, that's a question for the police department. I'm not on site. I go off what they tell me. Well, wait a minute, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Mr. Watson is the one recommending the CUP be revoked. Doesn't he have an obligation to verify the facts upon which he bases his recommendation? He was asked, what do you believe associated means, associated with the bank? That they are patrons, that they were employees, that they were somehow associated in going there or doing business there? Question, have you ever reviewed any police logs or calls for service logs related to the bank? Answer, nope. Why do you believe revocation will solve the problem of the bank? Watson's answer, well, it's specific actors that are involved and that are operating the business in this manner. So, you know, removing the liquor from the environment is certainly going to help. I don't know if it will solve everything, but this is what we have at our disposal to enforce, and that's what we are using. Question, you indicated that code enforcement reaches out to owners to act collectively. Did you reach out to the owner, a phone call, or something that isn't an enforcement letter? Answer from Mr. Watson, no, we didn't. By the way, the record also shows that Ms. Lane contacted Mr. Watson, Luke she calls him, about the hours to see if they could come up with something. Mr. Watson never returned her call. And there was another shooting that was testimony about employee of the bank, wasn't an employee of the bank, the record shows it was an ex-bouncer who'd been turbinate by the bank, was shot and killed on the doorstep. Two other people were severely injured. When I read all of that, when I went through those transcripts, and they were two volumes, a lot of it, I thought, boy, the city's got some explaining to do here. They lost the 2008 modification. They say that their whole purpose of doing these things is to get compliance, yet they admit that they got compliance on the, on the noise violations. The record that came from the sheriff's office, by the way, Ms. Lane contacted the district commander. He's the one that provided the logs that showed the calls for service. Why weren't these other restaurants, the ones before you today, the ones that had more calls for service? I don't know. There have been several things suggested as reasons why what's happened has happened. One of them is the fact that the patrons of the bank are largely Latino and African-American. There's been some suggestion that there's some bias involved there. I don't know if that's true, but some people believe it. Certainly the bank people do. You know, years ago, when I was city attorney, we closed a number of businesses and houses that were houses of ill repute, but in every one of those, the people operating them were involved in selling drugs, or they were personally involved in prostitution. There's no evidence anywhere in the record that the people managing the bank were involved in those activities, certainly not involved in the violence. When the police department asked them if they would close early, they were one of the few restaurants in Old Town to agree to close early. Most of the others refused, but they agreed to. When they were told they needed more security, they hired more security. When they told they had to have licensed security, they immediately hired licensed I had one case that was overturned by the court, and it was overturned because a code enforcement officer testified that the senior assistant city attorney had told him not to give notice to a property owner. The former senior assistant city attorney, who by then was a judge, testified that he had given notice. But the court found, in its wisdom, that well, if the code enforcement officer thought he wasn't supposed to give notice, and then he admitted that's why he didn't give notice, he didn't get notice, so it was a violation. And I agree with that. He didn't give notice. But it also shows that city employees are not above inventing stories to explain their Mr. Fisk insisted at first in his testimony that he bolded that language change in 2012, so anyone who reads it will know that the hour's been changed. But yet, on cross-examination and after examining the record, he, he said, no, I cut and pasted it. So he did it. He admitted he had not testified truthfully. We're seeing a lot of this lately. I was constantly concerned as city attorney about government overreach. It was my experience as city staff, trying to do what they thought their bosses wanted them to do, solve problems, close problem locations, but sometimes they would go beyond what the law requires. And, and sometimes they'd make errors. And most of the time, it was an error. It wasn't anything malicious or evil or anything like that. Somebody just screwed up. Pardon my language, but that's what happened. And nobody wants to get in trouble, so you come up with a, with an explanation. We've seen that, a lot of that, just in recent weeks. We've seen two incidents that people on different sides of the political spectrum believe are wrong. We've seen a former president of the United States charged with a felony crime, and we've seen three members of the Tennessee Legislature kicked out for what was probably exercising their First Amendment rights to protest inside the legislature. I'm an registered independent. I don't belong to either political party, and it bothers me. me to see things happening that I believe as an independent, both cases are based on political reasons. I'm sure the New York attorney, district attorney believes that person he's doing did something wrong, I'm sure the legislators who voted to kick out those three legislators thought they were doing something wrong. But you know, businesses are the lifeline of the city. This business has done its best to do what the city wanted it to do. Old Town now attracts a different clientele than it once did, that's just a fact. And a number of them, consistent with the ethnic makeup of our state, are African American and Latino. But when a business tries to work with the city and then faces what this business is facing, and the financial loss, it's a serious problem. I would have pointed these problems out to the planning director, to the city staff when I was city attorney, and I would have said, you know, this is going to be a tough case. We'll get the revocation through the Planning Commission, we'll probably get it through the City Council, but I think we're going to have a problem when we get to court. And when a judge sees all of this, I don't believe the ALJ, I mean, he had testimony from the police officer, he had testimony from Mr. Watson. Mr. Richardson, who was the planning director who supposedly told Mr. Fisk to change the hours, retired or left this city in 2012, and we've tried to find him, we've hired an investigator, we don't know where he is, he's retired and he's gone. But given Mr. Fisk's other testimony, and there's a jury instruction we give in jury cases, that if you find that a witness has testified falsely in one incident, you should suspect his testimony in others. It's very clear, by his own admission, that Mr. Fisk testified falsely about bolding that. And the argument has been made that Mr. Fisk testified falsely about saying that Mr. Richardson told him to shorten the hours, because, you know, and even Watson later questioned, why is it closing so early? It doesn't make any sense, you got a type 47 license, how do you do that? I would argue that there's been talk about the revocation process in the transcripts, excuse me, about the eviction process, where the owner is evicting the tenants, and assuming that's probably because of what the city is doing, and the city is accusing the owner of not complying with the law. So the evidence shows the owner is evicting them. Now, once they're evicted, the people that are supposedly responsible are going to be They're going to suffer a lot of damages. These young people invested a lot of money into that restaurant, invested a lot of the city. The original applicant was on the Old Town, I'm not sure the name of it offhand, the Old Town Commission, worked with Mr. Richardson, his colleagues, they were friends on a first-day basis. You really think Richardson would have told Fisk to change the hours without ever talking to the owner? He was the one who told the owner that he needed to apply for the modification at one point in time, and he did. It just seems strange. I've got a couple motions I need to renew in closing. We've submitted to Ms. Fox an objection to the hearing today on the grounds that there's significant evidence necessary in the case of CNC Puma, which was prohibited from being introduced into evidence at the hearing before the City Planning Commission. CNC Puma requested the videos of the shooting which occurred at the bank on January 9, 2022 be introduced into the evidence at that hearing. The reason was because the videos they contend proves that the, that there was no altercation leading up to the shooting that they could have prevented. Those videos were recorded, the evening of the question, they were located at different locations on the property, they were turned over to the police department. The district attorney understandably has objected, the criminal case is not resolved, so the district attorney doesn't want the videos made public, which I completely understand as a former prosecutor. However, the solution to that is normally you would continue the hearing until such time as the criminal matter is over, and the Planning Commission, and now you, are able to lawfully, without objection, review that evidence. And if even part of your decision is based on a belief that the bank could have done, as the sergeant testified, something to stop that murder from happening, in fairness, should you not see that video before you make your decision? So we're renewing that objection today, we made it before the Planning Commission, it was denied, and we're renewing it. We believe it was error for the Planning Commission to proceed with this hearing after the objection, without them having the opportunity to view the videos, and we believe it would be error for you, based on the record, to make your decision, to uphold the decision of the Planning Commission and the ALJ, based on the evidence before you, when there's other evidence out there that we as an offer of proof contend clearly contradicts that evidence. I want to thank you for listening to me. I think you've got one of the most beautiful city halls I've ever been in in my entire life. I just, from the outside, the inside, it is so functional and so practical, and I think you have a beautiful city, and my wife and I love going to Old Town, going to your restaurants. We don't usually do it on a Friday or Saturday night, we stay closer to home, but you've got a wonderful community, and I'm proud to have an opportunity to make this presentation to you today, and I think I'll be addressing you again after the public comments, but I am renewing those motions and objections. Thank you for your time.
Before we go to questions, I'd like to ask the counsel for the City Council to address those motions as well as the objection raised by the city of Tamaki's attorney.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. So, a few things here, I will go ahead and rule on Mr. Pennman's motions, and again, reject them. As to the video, the video was available at the time of the administrative law judge hearing. It was not provided or offered into evidence at that time. Moreover, that video is part of a criminal ongoing investigation, and so is not necessary here, is not part of the record. I do also want to note that there were several items that Mr. Pennman made during his presentation where there is absolutely no evidence in the record on them. One was he raised a number of racial issues about the racial mix of the customers at the bank. There's been absolutely no evidence that there's any sort of racial bias in the enforcement of the revocation of the CUP. Secondly, there was the statement made that the, I think it's Amanda Moore, invested a lot of money in the bank. There is, again, absolutely no evidence in the record of any monetary contribution that was made by Ms. Moore. So I want to clarify that for this body. And the other motions that Mr. Pennman have made, again, are not well taken and they are rejected.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions of my colleagues for our council before we move to questions for Mr. Pennman?
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
You stated, when we stated on February 2, 2012, when the hours of operations were changed back to the original times in 2007, and we talked about the issue of cutting and pasting, the individual that you stated in his testimony, he stated that he did not copy and paste it, but then you stated another time he admitted to cutting and pasting it. Is there clarification on that?
Yeah, if I said that precisely as you said it, I misspoke. He originally said that he, in 2012, he bolded the hours because they were reduced, and he wanted anybody who saw the permit to see that they were reduced. And his testimony was that he bolded them at that time in 2012. Subsequently, under cross-examination, he admitted that he had cut and pasted the 2007 hours, which were already bolded at that time, so he was not the one who... So he did not bold it in 2012, contrary to what he had just testified to under oath.
Okay, and on that same note, you stated that it went from a type 41 to a type 47. Is in that 2007 initial CUP from the 2012, when you stated that, that could be evidence that it was copy and pasted, is the CUP from 2007, is that where it went back to the type 41 to the type 47?
2007 was the original, and it was a type 41. Subsequently, and I'm not sure if it's exactly what year it was, it became a type 48, 47, excuse me.
Right, so when they reissued it in 2012, in the new CUP, is that when you're saying that the original 2007 one, it went back to the original type in 2007, when it was not supposed to?
Not the type, not the alcohol beverage control type, the hours. That's when they were, in 2012, they cut and pasted the hours from 2007. They had, according to their, to this, what is in the record, the staff stated that they had lost the 2008 modification that extended the hours to the 2:00 PM closing.
Okay. And I guess just my next question would be for the city, but I'm not sure if we do that another time.
We'll have to do that later, I think. Mayor Perdem Stewart?
Yeah, so I'm still kind of confused as far as the shooting, I saw the video, and I don't blame the bank for it at all. It happened so fast, there would have been nothing they could have done.
How did you see the video, if I may ask?
I was able to see it.
Okay.
Anyways, so, but I'm kind of confused, when the city approached the bank about the hours, why didn't the bank come down to the city and change the CUP and go for the extended hours?
I do not represent the person who was running the the original gentleman. The current people have told me that they thought it was a mistake and that it would get rectified, that, you know, at first, Mr. Puma brought the 2008 modification to the attention of the city, and the subsequent people, Ms. Lane and Mr. Parent, whom I do represent, they thought that it was just a confusion within the city, and it was going to be resolved, and they thought that the fines were going to be, you know, at least the fines for staying open late were going to be dismissed once that was done. I think it was perhaps somewhat naive of them. But in my years of experience, I've learned that businesses are not run usually by lawyers, and they don't pay as much attention to the fine points of their permits and other things as they do to the type of food they're ordering and things of that nature. So I can't answer that question except to say that they kept bringing it to the attention of the city, the record shows that, the transcript shows that, they testified that they went back to the city, they kept showing them that. But the problem wasn't corrected. I still think, the thing that bothered me most as a city attorney, somewhat what you're saying, is that nine years passed between the time the change took place before the city started trying to enforce that provision, that, I don't understand that.
So, and you should know, so when did the, when did the bank change hands? When did it go from Craig Puma to the new proprietors?
I'm not sure exactly.
What year was that?
I'm not sure exactly.
February 2020? 2020, okay.
February 2020, according to Mr. Parent, I don't know that off the top of my head.
All right.
Sure it's in my files.
And then also the entertainment license portion of it, when they got the 2012 upgrade to entertainment, and then the entertainment that was taking place got cited, wasn't that an indication or a red flag to come into the city and find out what kind of entertainment we're actually allowed to have?
My understanding from talking to my clients is that they thought that the 2008 modification allowed live entertainment, and that included a DJ. And I'm under the impression they did discuss that with the city officials, but I have no, that's just my impression.
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Penn?
Yes, I want to follow up on my colleague's question regarding the cut and paste and the bolding. So you said that, to you, that when the cut and paste was discovered, that it took it back to the original time from 2007, correct?
Yes, sir.
But I also thought you said that it also took it back to a 41 permit rather than a 47, and that was the key to you, that there was a mistake. Is that what you said?
Yeah, that was also, that was also in there, because that was part of the cutting and pasting.
Okay.
Which I think is further evidence that it was cut and pasted, although Mr. Fisk ultimately admitted that, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Alexander?
Yes, thank you. I just have a couple of questions, just again, moving along with my colleagues here. First off, the process of finalizing the CUP, anything, I mean, am I correct in saying we need a signature to say we verified and looked over the documentation to ensure that everything is correct before we enter into a contract? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
Okay, before entering into a contract, typically a CUP, wouldn't somebody typically look over all of the information to ensure that it is correct before they enter into a contract with anyone?
That would certainly be my advice to anyone. I'm constantly confronted with people who sign documents to purchase a new home or refinance their home, who's telling me they haven't read all of it.
Right.
So I know, but I would, as a legal matter, I would agree with you.
Okay.
As a practical matter, I would say that that doesn't always happen.
Okay, thank you. And then you had also mentioned that Mr. Watson, she or the lady, I forgot her name, had come in, go ahead.
Ms. Lane.
Ms. Lane, yes, thank you. Ms. Lane came in to look for Mr. Watson, or had phone called him, I think you had said.
Yes.
That was a one-time, and there was over 100 and some on code violations that had received tickets and letters and stuff. Why wasn't that done more, if it was that important to her, that they paid some of them? Why didn't she come in more and really want to make sure that her business and her establishment was taken care of, if that was her priority? Because if...
The record shows it was done frequently, that was the only one to Mr. Watson himself that she informed me of, but that going to the city hall, discussing it with planners, people there at the desk, that that was done frequently. Certainly Mr. Puma, that's why he went in, you know, he provided the ABC copy of the 2008 modification, that certainly was done.
Okay.
By the way, I was just handed a note that race was brought up in the first hearing, that Ms. Lane was asked about what she thought the RSO meant, and so the type of people was the response. She also says, we were never cited for entertainment. And again, that the 2012 modification misstated the type 41 permit instead of a type 47.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I just have one quick question. You had mentioned during your oral argument that Mr. Puma had never read the CUP. I'm sure you're going to say that you don't represent him, but from a practical matter, that's probably not a great thing for someone to do if they're filing for a CUP and they don't read it, would you consider that problematic?
Definitely, I do. There are certainly things that I think could and should have been done that were not. But I think looking at the overall record, everything that happened, the nine years not enforcing it, the mistakes in the testimony about the monikers, the errors on the number of incidents attributed to the bank, the fact that other restaurants had more incidents, I think that all of that in total makes this a case that when I was city attorney, I would not have wanted to go to revocation at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, a couple more follow-up questions, if we have the time.
Go ahead.
First question is, how many citations have been given to the new owners since they took ownership in 2020?
I believe that all of the citations that were given began in 2021, therefore, they were the owners at that, at that time. And they were also the owners that corrected the noise violations at that time.
And on that note, have your clients stated why they've based their And on that note, have your clients stated why they've based their hours of operation off of the CUP in two thousand and eight and not the CUP in two thousand and twelve? Again, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but when they took ownership of the bank in two thousand and twenty, wouldn't they look at the current CUP and not a CUP, uh, given to them in two thousand and eight?
I think when they, um, from what I was told, the, um, Mr. Puma had left the two thousand and eight modification there. But they had not been able to find it, they, they did not know that he had. They knew that, uh, for years, they'd been closing at two. And nobody had ever said anything, so they felt they had no reason to believe that was a problem.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much for your time, your time is up. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to, um, the attorney for Zip Third Investments, the property owner attorney, Rick Edwards, to present their case at the podium. Welcome.
Morning, may I have permission to make a height, height and eyesight adjustment by putting this box here so I can see what I'm talking to you about? Is that okay? Thank you.
The podium, you can also raise the podium as well.
Oh, you can, oh, great.
Yep.
That may be enough.
I hadn't thought of that before you got here.
Okay, great, perfect. Is this mine?
Yes, it is.
Okay, um, and I read all your biographies, and I was, I won't get into the Saint Mary's baseball, that's another story, but it was very interesting. I have a son who'd be very interested in that, but but getting to the point here, from what I read, everybody here believes in following the law. And I know, I know you all took an oath to do that when you, when you went on the city council, or so I'm informed by the city clerk. That's all I'm going to ask you to do. If anybody thinks I'm coming down here today with some idea that I could give you a fast shuffle or ignore the record, say there's nothing went wrong here, they're just mistaken. But I'm going to try to present things for your consideration, and I'm going to try to minimize any lawyer spin. Things I'm saying to you, if you don't believe them, I'd like you to interrupt me at the time, it'll count against my time, that's fine with me. But I didn't come down here to make a speech, I came down here to present certain things to you for you to consider. There's two major things I'd like you to consider. First is, are we going to play by the rules or aren't we? Are we going to change in the middle of the game? You couldn't do that on a Sandlot baseball diamond, and the city should not do that here. At the start of the hearing, the administrative law judge asked, are there two permit holders here? Are there two permit holders here? Ms. Petrusis, representing the city, this wasn't the city staff trying to revoke a permit. She was representing the city, and Ms. Fox has confirmed that. She is, Ms. Fox is special counsel to you, Ms. Petrusis is counsel to the city. She told you this morning, city staff, there's a disagreement between the two lawyers who she represents. But I will tell you, there was no disagreement at that hearing. She represented the city, and she wanted the administrative law judge to revoke as to two permit holders. I'll show you the slide with that, there's no debate about it, it's right in the transcript, and I cited it in the appeal. Another key point, this was stated, and I'll have a slide on this also. The administrative law judge, after saying whether there were two permit holders, was a, quote, "very critical issue." Not critical, very critical. The other one was, it seems to me, says the administrative law judge, the question legally will come down to, will come down to, can the city hold this permit holder responsible? This permit holder, Mr. Solomon, right there, Zip Third Investments, responsible for violations of the CUP by their tenant. Now, if you read the administrative law judge hearing, if you were at the hearing and if you heard the argument this morning by Ms. Petrusis, she did not say, not once, nor did the administrative law judge decision state that Zip Third was responsible for the violations by the tenant. And nobody ever said, and I have to compliment, I complimented Mr. Watson at the planning commission hearing, I want to compliment him again, everybody ought to hear it. I've been practicing law fifty years, this is one of the best witnesses I've ever heard. He's honest, he's factual, he knows his stuff. He never, not a single time, tried to blame Zip Third. Zip Third is a property owner, you, the city, with all these violations that you, that were alleged, not appealed, not contested, you, the city, for the first time in ten years, according to Mr. Watson's testimony at the hearing, decided to try to revoke a permit, conditional use permit, first time. You waited for all these violations to occur, to give notice of all these violations, to get into civil penalty letters, and before that, before that, there were warning letters sent, and before that, there were meetings with the tenant, the police, the fire department. Mr. Watson's staff all met with the tenant, said, "Knock it off." Now, the tenant felt they had a right to continue, so they did. That's their fight, not mine. You waited all that time, not saying improperly, you built a case. Well, you're the city of Temecula, you have a lot of power, you don't have to go to a court to revoke, you don't have to face a jury to revoke. And when you revoke, you do not put, and Mr. Watson testified to this, you do not put the tenant out of business. The tenant continues in business. You can give him more citations, but Mr. Watson testified, he didn't know if if revocation would have an effect on their operations. He says nothing else had, that was his testimony. What can the landlord do? There's only one thing the landlord can do to stop this, could try talking to the tenant, Mr. Solomon did. Soon as he got, he got a call from Ms. Petrusis, this was all in the record. It's the Fourth of July weekend, on July first, he gets a call at five o'clock. He's advised by his office, there's a call, he returns the call at five fifteen. Five twenty-five, he speaks to Ms. Petrusis, she tells him, there is going to, we're trying to revoke the conditional use permit. He says, "What?" He knows nothing about it. He then tries to contact Mr. Watson, and he testified to this. He tries to contact Mr. Watson, whom he had met years before, when he first started buying properties in Temecula. He's bought nine, still owns five, he owns the entire block where the bank is, which Mr. Watson testified was the premier intersection in the city. If anybody thinks Mr. Solomon is going to ignore a threat to operations in a, in a city where he owns, has has owned nine property, currently owns five, has had more than fifty tenants without any problem ever, has put in a massive security system in a parking lot because the city was having problems with that parking lot behind the bank. If anybody thinks he's going to ignore an issue when he knows about it, it just doesn't make sense. Why would he? He's too heavily invested here. Now, there was an error, and there was an error on his side. He was hiding from COVID, he's seventy-six years old, that came out at the trial, at the administrative law judge hearing. Property manager, some of the, nothing was sent certified mail, like the code provides for a business owner, not to him, nothing. Nobody met with him, nobody talked to him until Ms. Petrusis, not once. There were civil penalty letters sent to his address, that's true. And the property manager says they started arriving in March of two thousand and twenty-two, eight different envelopes, sixteen citations. The property manager obviously should have told him, he doesn't control the, that's a separate company, as Ms. Petrusis said at the planning commission hearing. Bottom line is, when she told him, he jumped into action. He talked to the tenant, who testified to this, and said, "I want you to conform the hours." The tenant said, "I'm not going to do that because my lawyer says I'll have a weak case." The lawyer was not Mr. Penman. If I admit that I should conform the hours, that will weaken my case. So what did he do? By the way, the tenant was in bankruptcy at the time, and had been in bankruptcy for more than a year, and had a plan to get out of bankruptcy. Mr. Solomon got an order on August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, remember, he's told July one. Now he goes into the bankruptcy court on an expedited basis after the tenant won't cooperate. The tenant didn't agree with his position, which the tenant had every right to do, every right to disagree. Goes into bankruptcy court and and gets an order dismissing the bankruptcy. Try that sometime, it's not child's play. He could not initiate an unlawful detainer until then. I was asked at the planning commission hearing, is the unlawful detainer trial still on for March tenth or someday? I answered that I thought it was in March. I told Ms. Fox, uh, by letter, we have a stipulated judgment that the tenant has to get out by March, excuse me, by May thirtieth. They have to leave, they're going to be gone, they're going to be out of business. He had the power to do that. Ms. Fox said she was going to rule on that, she can rule on that at any time, but I told her this morning, I was going to bring this up, and she said, "Okay, bring it up." The, the, the bottom line is, and I have the judgment here, it's in my PowerPoints, the tenant has gone. He solved a problem you couldn't solve, because you don't have, you don't have the power, that's one power he had. But he had, when you file an unlawful detainer, it's kind of iffy, because the tenant is paying the rent. And all we had for a long time was just violation notices. Nobody said, there was no hearing on them, not a great case to take to an unlawful detainer in California of a commercial tenant with all the protections given to tenants and businesses as they have every right to have. But he has solved the problem, and there's no reason he wouldn't have addressed it earlier had he gotten what Mr. Watson testified as your pro-business, business-friendly procedure of notifying everybody. This is what the problem is. Now, the code, Ms. Fox is a hundred percent correct. The code says the certified bail and so forth goes to the business owner. And you can argue, is Solomon as Zip Third as owner of the, of the property in that business, but not the one causing the violations, is he entitled to notice? Okay, that's for you to decide. Mr. Watson says they talk, you talk, he talks to everybody as standard procedure, and he had met, he doesn't deny meeting with, he says he just doesn't remember it. Mr. Solomon said he followed his customary procedure. When he buys property in a city where he's not known, he goes in and meets with the city. Says, "I'm here, I'm serious, you have any problems, tell me." When he learned, he acted quickly. But my point is, if, if you take, you're going to confirm an administrative law judge decision, should you choose to do that? But you have to look at what the administrative law judge said. Number one, with the city's concurrence, two permit holders. Number two, comes down to, can the property owner be revoked because of something the tenant did when there's no effort by the city made to hold the property owner responsible for what the city did? Nobody ever said he was in cahoots or he enabled it, and that, that simply did not happen. Now, I, I want to get into, I had some other points I wanted to make, but boy, time goes fast. So I better get into, uh, the slides I have for you so you can see that I'm not just blowing smoke up here. I'll back it all up, everything I've said, you'll see it. The only thing, I would like you to just think about this, though. Conditional use permit revocation as the property owner is basically real estate capital punishment. You know, you've got to start all over, you've got to try to get a new permit, you've gotten a black eye. It's not a position that a property owner wants to be in. And, uh, you know, this is a city that wants business and encourages people to come here and invest. I ask you if that's a reasonable, uh, a reasonable thing under these circumstances, given not only your policies here, but also what the administrative law judge said this all came down to, and the total lack of evidence. And the prompt action, total lack of evidence regarding responsibility for Solomon or Zip Third, and the prompt action as soon as he did learn. So with that, let me go to the slides. So the first one is, uh, just the, the oath that you take to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and of the state of California. And then I have a case site under there, first sentence of which is today's Fresh Start Inc. Both the federal and state constitutions compel the government to afford persons due process before depriving them of any property interest. Now, Mr. Watson said, Ms. Petrusis said there are two permit holders, but if you look at the last paragraph, Mr. Watson himself recognized very forthrightly that the, he, he, conditional use permit conveys a vested right to the property owner, not something to be trifled with. And to his total credit, and with my absolute admiration, the guy from the position of the city, gave the tenant every conceivable chance for a long time. And they, they chose to sit on their position, and if you do that, there can be consequences. Now, here's, here's the point I was making, uh, at the, at the beginning. The administrative law judge says, "Am I hearing from you that there are two permit holders here? Both the property owner and the restaurant operator." Ms. Petrusis said, "Yes." And then the court, the administrative law judge says, "Okay, I have the parties' positions on that very critical issue." And then she said, "I believe from my personal review of this that the permit holder is both." Now, I talked, uh, before about, uh, Mr. Watson's testimony, the, the premier commercial intersection in the entire city, and Mr. Solomon's ownership interests here, he values his ownership here. This is something that he took very seriously, and his actions show it. Was the property manager negligent? Absolutely, he was, there's no question. He should have been told. You can give the property manager a pass by saying, "Well, it's COVID, people aren't going in the office," but there were people at that office getting the mail, there's no question about that, not going to hide that, it's a reality. And, you know, the, the, when you, when you contrast what happened here between, quite honestly, you, you, the, the city couldn't have given more pampered treatment to, uh, the tenant here in terms of notice and opportunity if the tenant were staying in the most expensive suite at the most pampering hotel in Las Vegas. But nothing like that came to the property owner, and the property owner should be respected. It's a vested property, right? The property owner should get more process than being told forty-five days, we're giving you forty-five days notice of a revocation hearing. And by the way, I understand that the city, uh, testifies that it sent all these letters to the Wilshire Boulevard address. I can tell you this, it's absolutely in the record. They sent a revocation letter to the property owner on May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, to the address at the bank. They, they claimed they were sending to his Wilshire Boulevard address, there's nothing more important than the revocation, uh, notice. They sent it to the wrong address, and Ms. Petrusis apparently figured that out and said, "We got to renotice those whole hearing," and called Mr. Solomon, that's how he was tuned into this. But basically, it, it's, it's just an incredible, uh, difference in treatment between the property owner and the tenant. The property owner is, is going to own the property, property owner can sell the property, but there's going to be a property owner for a long time. Tenants come, tenants go. And, and I'm sorry to say, it's just a reality. A property owner cannot go into a tenant, slap them across the face, pick them up and say, "Are you crazy? You got all these notices, behave." I've often wishes, I've often, I've often had to tell clients, I know you, you want me to tell the judge after two seconds to say, "The trial's over, judge, slap that witness for lying," but it doesn't work that way. He just, the judge doesn't have power to just dismiss testimony. Mr. Solomon did not have the power to go in and make them do anything. The city, by the way, could have filed a, a, a hearing and could have gotten an emergency restraining order had it chosen to do that for chronic violations. I don't know how the judge would have ruled for sure, I'm not a judge, but that was an option that was available. The city chose this other procedure, I'm not second. I'm not second guessing it. I'm simply saying that's what happened. Now, I do, I do want to show you this, this slide. Your Code Section 1.21.050. Look, look at the procedure that the, that the business owner, whoever that is, gets. First, this is to make sure somebody knows about an administrative citation. First, you attempt to locate the person. You, you mail to them. You mail by certified mail. This is after you've attempted personal service. You try to get a signature on it. It's an incredibly thorough procedure. And, and if you can't, if you look at D, if the enforcement official is unable to locate a responsible person for the violation, the administrative citation shall be mailed by certified mail. I mean, the, the notice is absolutely abundant. And here's what I was telling you before about the question legally will come down to can? Can? Is it legally possible? The city hold this permit holder responsible for violations of the CUP by their tenant? That wasn't done. It wasn't even attempted to be done. And for good reason, because he wasn't responsible. Now, I did, I did want to show you what, what we're up against, zip third, in trying to make an eviction. 6.1 of the lease says that the lessee shall not, shall not use or permit the use of the premises in violation of the restrictions of record. So we could say you're violating the conditional use permit. Therefore, we can, we can evict you. But, but, that's a landlord saying it. The city hadn't established it yet. There had been no administrative law judge hearing until August 31st and September 1 of 2022. So even if you, even if you believe that Solomon lied throughout the hearing and that he was, he, he decided he was going to try to kill himself in the real estate business in Temecula by getting all these notices and just disregarding them, even if you believe that, he could not credibly go into an unlawful detainer court and say, because the, wouldn't a judge, if you were a judge, Mr. Brown, Mr. Stewart, anybody, wouldn't you say, oh, wait a minute. How do I know these aren't like tickets? They've given them 100 tickets or 50 tickets and they haven't done anything? And you think you're, you, and the city hasn't tried to do anything except fine them and you want us to terminate their business and kick them out? Good luck with that argument. Try that in front of a jury. You'll go home hurting. But, but as soon as there was an administrative law judge hearing, planning commission proceedings, things are rolling. The tenant exercised their rights to demand a jury trial and delay things. But there is a stipulated judgment. And a bankruptcy lawyer that we used before standing by if they go back into bankruptcy. I don't think, I think that, I'm hoping the tenant will be honorable. Mr. Pennman is a very honorable man whom I admire, his experience and his distinguished career. And I'm, and, and Ms. Lane has been very gracious at all times. I'm expecting them to, to do as they've stipulated. If they don't, you know, we have remedies. Now, please look at the last paragraph on, on the, let me make sure I'm on the right slide. So if, if you look at the last paragraph, the city did not claim, and this is when I said there was no effort to hold the property owner responsible. The city didn't claim a violation of City Code 8.12.150 owner responsibility. It did not claim a public nuisance. And, you know, you can argue, well, gee, they could have said, this is a public nuisance and therefore we want to hold the property owner responsible. But they didn't. If they did, we would have defended that. But as I said, we went through, we were on trial. We responded to what was thrown at us. If it isn't thrown at us, we don't have to deal with it. And we didn't. And there was no finding. There was no advocacy that it was a public nuisance. And there was no attempt to hold the property owner responsible. Now, the, if you look at the paragraph here that says, from the decision, the, the administrative law judge said the issue is whether they were provided, they being the property owner, sufficient notice of intent to revoke. That under your code is 45 days. So you could say, well, they got 45 day, 45 days notice. And, and she took the position, as Ms. Fox has taken, that no matter what Mr. Watson testified to about business friendly and, and normal procedure not followed here, they gave 45 days notice. That's all they have to do. But that does not address the two issues that she said were critical, she being the administrative law judge. Two permit holders, which the city stipulated there were, and comes down to is zip third responsible? Is zip third responsible for the tenant? City didn't try to prove that. Now, there's been some suggestion that the city doesn't have the power to just revoke as to, as to one permit holder. Or if you adopt Ms., if you, in spite of what happened at the hearing, which I think it would be unlawful to do, but I'm not your lawyer. I, I put in the appeal, the, the published legal decisions addressing this issue about how you can't play the game under one set of rules and say, well, if we have a problem under those set of rules, we're changing the rules. We're saying that there is not, there are not two, two permit holders, only one. But you, if you, if you look at your power, you may revoke a permit or impose or modify any conditions. So even if you, if you, you have the power to revoke against the tenant, but say, we're revoking for so long, you could, you could say, revoking for so long as the bank is a tenant and then reinstating. And Section 4 of the conditional use permit amplifies that. Talk about what changed circumstances are and how you can review and modify the conditional use permit. You have a lot of power. And I will remind you, not a single citation was issued to zip third. Nobody ever said, you better do something about this tenant. Nobody ever said, you're responsible for this tenant. Nobody ever said, we're going to revoke as to you or fine you until the revocation letter, which was July. Not the one in May, because that was sent to the wrong address. No warning letters, no compliance with what Mr. Watson testified to. And I absolutely believe that he's, he testified truthfully. Standard procedure. We tell people. Now, I, I understand you might think, well, what's the difference between certified mail and regular mail? Well, people take certified mail more seriously. Your code is smart to say, if you can't serve them personally, give them certified mail. Certified mail would have come to Mr. Solomon's attention. No property manager is going to ignore it. No property manager who doesn't want to end their career is going to just ignore a certified letter that, that the contents of which property manager becomes aware of, which, which are illustrate fining of the, of the tenant. And because people take certified mail more seriously, the code requires it as secondary to personal service. That's the second thing you do. Now, you know, just to, when you're talking about what might have happened had Mr. Solomon known about this, he's got a long history, which he testified to, of responsible civic participation. He was a founding member of the Old Town Business Association. And when the police had a problem with vagrants in the parking lot, he testified to the expense of the security system put in. They're actually human beings monitoring the cameras. And when people got out of line in the parking lot, doing what people do, getting drunk or whatever, getting overly romantic, the, the person monitoring would say, hey, knock that off. Get out of here. And it worked. And this was, the, the cooperated with the police, made his, made his property available to the police when they wanted to surveil the parking lot. There's, there's no irresponsible civic participation here. And by the way, none of Mr. Solomon's testimony was refuted. You know, Ms. Petrusis said in her brief, he, he may wish he had a better responsible, he had a better property manager. But nobody disputed that he put in the system. Nobody disputed his history of participation. That didn't happen. By the way, I mentioned the bankruptcy order. This is the order dismissing the bankruptcy. Again, as I said, not, not easy. Not easy to do. And then I mentioned Mr. Watson's testimony regarding the custom and practice of things. He said, what, what the city always does in terms of code enforcement, we have a very well-worn philosophy for court and code enforcement. And that is that we are not there in the city to take a heavy hand. We first talk with the owners, talk with the business owners and try to educate them and make sure that we are all understanding what the rules are and what the conditions are. And we work collaboratively to begin with. And you've got to give them an A plus. He did that. He did that with the tenant. Now, I, I, but, and I, I asked him, you testified that the code enforcement situation is the city tries to be business friendly and that the city does not want to use a heavy hand as to owners, but instead to work collaboratively. I think I quoted that pretty accurately. Based on that, did you ever attempt to contact Mr. Solomon or anyone at zip third by phone, for example? And he, he said very forthrightly, as he always was, no. My, my question is, you indicated that code enforcement reaches out to owners to act collaboratively. Did you reach out to this owner to act collaboratively? Meaning a phone call or something that isn't an enforcement letter? That is my definition for purposes of this question. Answer, no, we didn't. And you can see in the decision, page 33 of the administrative law judge decision, I, I, she's, the judge said, Mr. Watson also admitted on cross-examination that he never reached out to zip third in addition, in an effort to address the violations of the CUP and city ordinances committed by the bank. Well, I don't think, I, I don't think admitted is, is really the correct word. He forthrightly acknowledged it. He never tried to hide anything. He was very forthright. It also says on the decision that he admitted in cross-examination that in the past 10 years, the city has not revoked any other CUP for a business. Again, that was a forthright statement by him. This is not something that had been done. But in this case, they chose to do it. Obviously, the city does it reluctantly. My question, why? Why to the property owner? And I, I told you how the city served. I'm sorry, let me go back. Mr. Cole testified regarding service. And I went through this and here's his testimony. He said, he said he mailed certified and regular mail to the bank, to the agent for service for the bank. And he's, he, he CC'd Mr. Solomon as Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan, not Mr. Solomon. So they had, we, we know with the critical letter of May 19th, they sent it to the wrong address. Maybe they sent the, we also know, because we, we freely acknowledge, definitely some of the citations went to the correct address. Because in March, there were, we acknowledged receiving eight envelopes with 16 citations. So as of March, there's no question that zip third knew that there were citations being issued to their tenant. And the unlawful detainer I, I talked about and the, the, and here's Mr. Watson's testimony. If you look down to the, to the fourth paragraph, Mr. Watson testified that revocation was an uncertain remedy against the bank. Again, very forthright testimony. I have no idea what will happen after the revocation. They haven't listened to the city or police department yet. So I don't know if they will, even if it is revoked. And then from the decision on page 54, if you look at the second sentence, which begins at the right margin on the second line, while Mr. Solomon credibly testified that the city's revocation of the CUP will not stop the continued violations by the bank and that eviction of the bank will do so, the only issue for determination in this hearing is whether the city has met its clear and convincing evidence burden to establish that conditions of approval of the CUP have been violated and revocation of the CUP is appropriate under these circumstances, and it has done so. I agree frankly that it did so as to the tenant. But this does not address the need to do so as to the property owner. And remember, that was at the start of the hearing, a very critical issue. So why wasn't it followed through on? That's why we have the opportunity to come to you. You can correct the papers of the administrative law judge. And I urge you to do that. I told you what happened at the, the bankruptcy. And let me go back. Well, we had, we did have the testimony of Mr. Fernandez, who testified that a bankruptcy lawyer for zip third, August 23rd, 2022, dismissing the Chapter 11 bankruptcy. And you can see his testimony at the bottom of the slide here. As, as described by, at page 45 of the decision. I'm, I'm suggesting to you that in upholding the Constitution, due process can't be less than the city code. And then, and, and when the city says, when the city says there are two permit holders here, there's no reason the property owner should get less process than the tenant got. Why, why would that be the case? The tenant got everything I've talked about and Ms. Petrusis has itemized for a spectacularly long time. Now, it's true, you couldn't have sent in private detectives to watch a drag show that was put on by the property owner. But everything else, you could have done. The property owner could have been given the exact same notice at the exact same time, could have been contacted by phone, very easy to reach. Ms. Petrusis had no problem reaching the property owner. Everything else that happened could have been brought to the property owner's attention and should have been. Personal contact, certified mail, telephone call, all your procedure for a permit holder. Why wasn't it done for the property owner? Now, there's a burden here. It's clear and convincing evidence. And, and this is a, this is a critical point and very easy to overlook because all of our lives, we decide things by probabilities. What's more likely than not? If you, if you look at this slide, from your code, the planning director or designee shall have the burden of proof to establish by clear and convincing evidence the facts which his or her his or her recommendation to revoke the permit is based, clear and convincing. What does that mean? Our Supreme Court says, clear and convincing evidence, and this is the Supreme Court of California, okay? You can't say, well, I'm going to disregard the Supreme Court. As I said, this is a pro-law counsel, as it should be. Quote, "so clear as to leave no substantial doubt, sufficiently strong to command the unhesitating ascent of every reasonable mind." So is it that clear to you? Now, I gave you the law. I'm not paraphrasing the law. I read it to you. Is anybody seriously going to tell me that the evidence is clear and convincing as to the property owner? I hope not. I think that Mr. Solomon has proven he's a responsible property owner. I do also, I also want to point something out. Ms. Petrusis talked about Ms. Lane's testimony regarding what she told, what she told the property owner about the permit. When I say the property owner, it was the property manager. And Ms. Petrusis examined Ms. Lane at the trial, and she asked, she asked Ms. Lane, so, do you believe that David Pinkerton, that's the property manager, knew about the citations that were issued to CNC Puma Corporation for violations of the CUP? Answer, there were some. How many? It's not like I went over it. I don't think it was that detailed. Now, that was day two of the hearing, page 164, lines 11 through 22. I then had the opportunity to cross-examine Ms. Lane, and I talked to her about the conversation that Ms. Petrusis referenced, summer 2021. And she said, I asked her, do you know Ms. Lane, whether it was this conversation or some other conversation where you said to him, I've gotten some citations or official communications from the city? And she said, answer, I know we had it in that conversation. I don't know if we had it in a previous conversation as well. So I then followed up, because that's still consistent with what Ms. Petrusis told you this morning. I said, what is your best recollection of what you said? I'm coming to the jackpot here. What is your best recollection of what you said? And let me tell you what I'm trying to get at. You just mentioned I'm getting hassled. Or did you say I have gotten a citation? And if you don't know, say you don't know, but be as precise as you can. And her answer was, I would actually be guessing. I knew I told him we were being hassled. I couldn't honestly say if I said exactly if there was citations, not citations, what it was about. Like I said, it was mostly about the parking lot and the city, how he felt the city was portraying us and was going along with how I was saying the city was acting toward us. And remember, I told you about the parking lot. There were problems in the parking lot. Solomon put in this whole security system, which I described to you. So that's a little different than, and that's the final word that she gave on this. What Ms. Petrusis, Ms. Petrusis brought out something on direct examination, but I'm entitled to cross-examine. I'm entitled to say, be as precise as you can. And when we got her as precise as she can, she said, I don't know. I don't know if I talked about citations. So this idea that there's some kind of proof that Solomon knew for sure, it's just not there. Certainly not clear and convincing. And he did, he testified, Mr. Solomon, this is in the transcript, page 222, lines 7 through 13, that he requested a meeting with the city manager almost right away after he was contacted by Ms. Petrusis. And he, did you receive a response? I did. What was the response? That he would decline to meet with me and told me it would have to be worked out with the city attorney. Okay? That's not an unreasonable response. The city attorney is going to revoke at that point. They've crossed the Rubicon. But he tried. And if somebody had contacted, so he was always willing, and he had told that to Mr. Watson when he first bought property. So in summary, in my last 47 seconds, two permit holders, city stipulated to it, nothing against one permit holder. That's number one. Two, issue raised by the administrative law judge, can you, it comes down to, can you hold? Mr. Solomon, Zip Third, the property owner, responsible for the acts of the tenant? No, you can't. And they did not try to. It's not in the decision, it wasn't in Ms. Petrusis's presentation, and they could have, had they alleged, I read you that city code, 8.12, they could have, had they thought they had evidence to do it. They didn't, so they didn't.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, I'll.
Yeah, before you step down, I'm going to ask my colleagues if there's any questions.
Sure.
Go ahead, Mayor Portem, sir.
So you mentioned something about revoke and reinstate, that that is a possible option.
Conditionally revoke. Revoke until the tenant is gone.
Right.
You can modify it any, you've got, you've got power.
Okay.
Extreme power.
All right. Okay. That's what I wanted to.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your oral argument. Okay, at this time, we're going to take a brief, let's call it 10-minute break, and then when we come back, the attorney for the city will have a chance for rebuttal, and then we'll move into public comments. So stay close, everyone. Okay, everyone, welcome back. After our brief 10-minute break, we're going to reconvene this special meeting of the Temecula City Council. And we will move to, the attorney for the city has an opportunity for rebuttal. I believe we'll put a time up on our timer. You have the floor. Let's see if we can get the podium mic on. Go ahead and try it now.
Testing. Yep, it's working. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm not going to belabor points that have been discussed in depth before, but I did want to make a couple of points as to CNC Puma Corporation and also as to Zip Third after listening to their council's presentations. CNC Puma Corporation continues to argue that the operating hours were changed in error. They make a big deal about whether these hours, whether the information was cut and pasted or not. It doesn't matter. The hours are the hours in the 2012 conditions of approval. Even if they had been in error, which we are not arguing, Mr. Puma had an opportunity to appeal that, and he did not. Mr. Puma or CNC Puma Corporation, Ms. Lane, they had an opportunity to appeal any of the over 100 citations and civil penalties. They did not. They had an opportunity to apply for a minor modification to the CUP to adjust the hours. They did not. What remains undisputed as to CNC Puma Corporation is that they intentionally violated the hours as set forth in their CUP in the conditions of approval. It is also undisputed that they violated the live entertainment provisions. They admit to having the DJ. They admit to having the DJ until 1:00 a.m. They admit to having drag show performances. All of these are in violation of the conditions of approval. They have not explained those violations at all. As to Zip Third Investments, they make the argument that as a permit holder, that they are required to have received the citations and civil penalties. Of course, the city maintains its position that they did provide copies of 97 civil penalties to Zip Third. But their argument falls apart when we realize that the code does not require issuing citations and civil penalties before initiating a revocation action. The code requires at Section 1703085, subsection A, subsection 1, subsection A, if the planning director determines that any conditions of approval have been violated, the planning director shall send notice to the permit holder and the city clerk. It is undisputed that that notice was sent to Zip Third Investments and to the bank. They admitted during testimony that they received it. The city has complied with the notice requirements for CUP revocation. But as I mentioned, Zip Third was on violation of these, was on notice of these violations. Mr. Solomon testified that he did not visit his office often during the pandemic. But Mr. Solomon's decision not to visit his office or make arrangements to have the mail forwarded is not the city's responsibility. It is disingenuous for Zip Third to claim it wasn't properly notified. It's unbelievable that someone receives multiple pieces of mail at their official address from the city of Temecula, addressed to their business, and referencing a property owned by that business that then notifies them that their tenant has been in violation of the municipal code. And what they would then disregard, those multiple notices and say, but I wasn't properly Finally, there is only one CUP. The bank operates pursuant to that CUP, but it also runs with the land. There is nothing in the municipal code that provides authority by which to revoke a CUP as to the tenant, but not as to the owner of the property. And I'm not sure how that would work in any event. And ultimately, if I understand Zip Third correctly, so if there is a property owner who is not responsible for the violations, and it's the tenant that is responsible for the violations, then the CUP cannot be revoked? That cannot be the law. The city cannot be hampered in that way. That is not what the law provides. And so we maintain our position that the city council should uphold the planning commission's decision to revoke the CUP. Happy to answer any further questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. And I do recall, Councilmember Cobb, you did have some questions for city attorney. Go ahead.
A lot to digest here, but the first one I would say is, say that Zip Third did receive all the letters and they understood what was going on at the bank. What would the city expect Zip Third, the property owner, to do with the tenant in place?
Well, I think that assumes that we would have understood what their options were. And, you know, we, I have to be a little bit delicate about this because the city cannot insert itself in a business relationship between the property owner and its tenant. We just can't get involved in that. So we put them on notice that there were violations, even though we weren't required to do so before initiating the revocation action. And so we believe we complied with the code in that sense. But certainly, we could have mentioned to the property owner, you know, your tenant's in violation. They have some options. There are some options. You can apply for a minor modification. And, you know, there are appeal procedures, and we could have explained the situation to the property owner. There was a point in time when there was a possible appeal of the conditions of approval that was available to the permit holder that was not taken advantage of. So now here are the options. If your tenant does not like the operating hours, here are the options. But the option is not to continue to violate.
And to clarify, the CUP is given to the property itself, not necessarily the individual business that is at the property. Is that correct?
So the applicant for the permit, for the conditional use permit, was Mr. Puma of CNC Puma Corporation. And I'm smiling at Ms. Fox because I'll let her insert her legal interpretation about the rights of the, of the business owner and of the property owner.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to point out and invite everyone's attention to the resolution the planning commission adopted. That's Planning Commission Resolution 2023-04, and invite attention to the second page, Section 2A. That calls out that the planning commission is modifying the finding of the administrative law judge and is finding that the permit holder is the bank, the bank CUP is Puma Corp., and finding that the property owner, Zip Third Entertainment Investments, excuse me, has a property interest in the bank CUP which runs with the land. So let me back up. There's one CUP. The applicant and the CUP is issued to the bank. That is the business that is operating at that particular site. It is true that the property owner has a interest because the property interest runs with the land, that CUP. So I am totally in accord with the notice requirements that the city's council has called forth, and they were complied with here.
Okay. Any other questions from my colleagues up here? Mayor Portem, sir, go ahead.
Okay. Address the revoke and reinstate idea. Is that, is that something that is done? I mean, is that a viable option?
So it's my understanding that at this point in time, the council is considering whether to uphold the planning commission's decision to revoke, that that is the only thing before the council at this time. Now, whether staff would have considered revoking and then reinstating, I don't know the answer to that. I know that staff proceeded with requesting revocation.
Does that answer your question? Okay. I mean, because the language says, you know, render a decision upholding or denying. There's no gray area there.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll go ahead and move on to our public comment portion of this special meeting. And I would ask the deputy city clerk if we have any public comments, and if so, to call the first speaker.
Yes, we do have six in-person public comments, and I received some emailed, which will be made part of the record as well.
Okay, thank you. Please call the first speaker.
First speaker is Ron Parent, to be followed by Amanda Lane.
Hello. My name is Ron Parent. I am his father, Ryan Parent. So I have an interest. I have five minutes, so I'm just going to jump in here. On the issue of the CUP, Craig Puma obtained a CUP in 2007. That CUP allowed him to stay open till 10 o'clock on weeknights and 11 o'clock on weekends, and gave him a beer and wine liquor license, I think. Craig then applied and was granted a minor modification to stay open till 2:00 a.m. seven nights a week, and was granted a spirits license, liquor license, in 2008. These are things we know. By 2012, Craig had become very active in city affairs. He was, he served on several committees. He was head of the Old Town Business Association, or whatever it's called. The then-city planner, Pat Richardson, served on some of the same committees, and Craig considered Pat a friend. In 2012, Pat ran into Craig at City Hall and mentioned he had and mentioned he had heard that Craig had hired a guy to sing, kind of background music, guitar, piano, not sure. But he told him he needs to get a minor modification to allow that to occur. That was their conversation. Pat said, it's okay, it's no problem. And he walked Craig straight into Stuart Fisk and said, Pat, and he said, Stuart, do me a favor. Help Craig get a mod for entertainment at the bank now. So Fisk and Craig worked together for, I don't know, an hour. Craig filled out a form, the wrong form, and they worked for an hour. Then Craig went back to the bank, and Fisk continued on and got the minor modification pushed through, something that took him six hours to complete. And this is a process that takes six months in some cases, depending on the complexity. So it was a favor, and Fisk got it done, six hours. There was, there were a few problems with the modification. Fisk, Fisk claims that he had scheduled meeting with Pat Richardson to review the bank's minor modification. And at the meeting, Richardson told him that he was uncomfortable with the bank's hours. This is the testimony that is in the judge, you know, the trial that happened some months ago. The, he said, Richard, Fisk said that Richardson told him to reduce the bank's hours to the two thousand and seven CUP. That cut twenty-six hours of the most profitable hours of the bank's operation with that order. And not a word, not a phone call, between two men that were friends before and after this occurrence in two thousand and twelve. Nothing in writing, nothing verbally, nothing. Puma pulled his envelope out, looked at it, was confirmed he got his permit, and away it went in a drawer. That's what happened. This is all in the city, his testimony, Fisk's testimony in the city hearing. In the same hearing, Fisk, with perfect recollection, recalls bolting the new hours. And somehow that was, you know, his way of communicating, you know, an important aspect. Of course, he changed his testimony to, the, I cut and pasted it. It's kind of a big deal because he cut and pasted everything. Not the hour, not just the hours. He's changed the, he changed the liquor license. He, the dates were all off. He literally just cut and pasted the whole document. He had six hours to get it done and get it out the door. In the same hearing, excuse me.
So your, so your time is up. In order to be fair to all the speakers.
Can I just, just short?
Briefly summarize.
Okay, the whole story that Fisk is telling about the scheduled meetings, I don't think are true. It's, it's a mechanism to make him correct. This was a error in a process, and the bank shouldn't be put out of business because of this error.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Amanda Lane, to be followed by Carlos Palma.
Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Hi, how are you yesterday? My voice is really messed up, so bear with me. So I'm one of the owners, I'm one of the owners of the bank. I'm gonna try and summarize this incredibly long thing in five minutes, which should take days and days and days. The amount of evidence that has not even been brought forth is breathtaking. So things that were brought up today that I want to clarify is there was mention of, and I know, I think Jessica asked the question about whether I, why I didn't reach out or try and fix the problem. I actually called Love Messages, talked to Luke's, Watson's secretary, went to City Hall. If you combine all the calls, the voicemails, the emails, and I can, I have them on my phone right now of me and Craig emailing him, he doesn't respond at all. The call logs, all that kind of stuff. The times that I went to City Hall, I know the girls that work in the office so well from sitting there waiting for him to get out of a meeting that he was in. He never spoke with me at all to try and rectify this. And he never spoke to Craig to try and rectify this. We asked him, okay, so obviously you're missing a document. We got it from ABC, we gave it to you. Now can we just fix this? I mean, no harm, no foul. Just, just fix the hour so we can continue the way it's been for, at the time it was going on, ten, eleven years. The parking lot issue, which I know the landlord brought up, their management company called us, called me, and said, city has called, they're blaming the parking lot issues on you guys. I explained to them that it's not you guys that use the parking lot. It could be anybody, it's a public parking lot. And he said it was causing them a lot of problems for landlords because they owned it. I said, I have an idea. How about we take over the parking lot at our cost? We, we'll put security back there. They'll make sure no one goes through. We'll put cones on the sides. After eight PM, when the other businesses close, smaller ones around us, nobody will even be allowed to walk through there. So doing drugs, prostitution, defecation, needles that were being found on the ground, all the stuff that was going on, we took care of. So for six months, we paid to have somebody out of our pocket do their parking lot, just so that, to help the city. The parking lot's, the landlord's not ours. So it was thousands of dollars a month that was being going out to secure an area where a lot of people go. A lot of people go because it's super dark and it's centrally located. So everyone walks through there and they're bar hopping at night. The citations, it keeps coming up about there were incidences of drunken public, so that kind of stuff. The calls to service will show that's not true. If they were, they're saying they saw people throw up and everything, yet there's no calls for service for it. There was no police activity, no ambulance is called. So that means city officials and RSO and fire all saw people passed out, throwing up, intoxicated, and nothing about it. I find that very hard to believe, that they did nothing. They saw it and just kept walking and did, there was no response to it whatsoever, when that's part of their job is to do that kind of stuff. And if they're around the bank, it doesn't mean they came from the bank. Everyone probably passes the bank every night they're down here. We're in the middle of Old Town. And in the nine years, they've been, Craig was open until two. I was a patron there myself. Many times, there was never any issue until the twenty twenty, March twenty twenty-one. Fire is also missing records. The two thousand and eight was not the only thing that was lost in that exchange thing. When I, our business license was held up, it was due to fire. I went over to the fire area, and they told me, they were upset because city was, they had no records for the bank. So they actually took the hold off our business license because they couldn't find the records, and I know I'm out of time.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Carlos Palma, to be followed by Megan Haddon.
Welcome.
Hi, how are you? My name is Carlos. I own a property here. I was prior, prior owned by my stepfather, who came to Temecula in eighteen fifty-four. And I remember, because I have some of his documents, he was the first president of the Old Town Temecula Association. Not the business, but the Temecula Association because they wanted to preserve Old Town. Because I, I think some company was gonna do different things, and they got together, two hundred people that used to live here, created this organization to preserve Old Town. And in one of the documents I was reading, what they wanted to do with it in forty years. They were talking about this in nineteen sixty-eight. And this document said, well, in forty years, Temecula could be this, meaning Old Town. This was, became today. But I see a lot of changes had happened because incidents, and I agree, we need to take care of our town and not create problems. But also, I'm afraid that if some property owner gets their licenses revoked because of a tenant, that's a problem because brings the properties down. What if I want, what if I have a tenant like that? Well, get out, get me a new tenant that goes by the rules, which I agree, we need to take care of the codes and go by the rules. But it's not, for me, it's not right that the property owner has to pay the price. Because I've been in both sides. I used to have a nice little restaurant, and we had entertainment. Always said, it depends on the entertainment, that's what you attract. I used to attract mature audience. Just to do some salsa dancing, it was very nice. I just got tired of it, so I sold it. But it's not right for the property owner to lose it because of a bad tenant. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Megan Haddon, to be followed by Matthew Moore.
Hello, my name's Megan Haddon. I've been working at the bank for just over two years.
If you could, if you could step up to that microphone a little closer, we can hear you.
Better?
Uh, no?
My name's Megan Haddon. I've been speaking, working at the bank for just over two years as a bartender and a manager. And I just think that it's kind of crazy how many things we get hit with for over-serving, people throwing up outside, that sort of thing. I'm there most of the shifts, I work a lot of hours. And our bartenders are all pretty good about not over-serving. And honestly, because of where the bank is located, we get the tour buses from the wineries drop people off right there, and they come stumbling off of that. And I feel like they're just right there on our corner. People just automatically associate us with that, as well as we have benches right outside of our property. So people walk into their cars that have already been somewhere else, drinking heavily, stop and take breaks there. I've seen people throw up on them. I've had people walk into my bar that before I could even cut them off, or not cut them off, but refuse them service, they're already throwing up because they are coming from somewhere else. The way that we have like a walk-up bar, it just makes it welcoming, I think. People know they don't have to go by a host or anything like that. If they are already over-intoxicated, they just feel comfortable walking in there. And I feel like we get hit with a lot of that, and people just assume it's us. And I feel like that's very unfair. And obviously, there's some sort of a mix-up with the CUP rules. But since September of last year, we've been following every guideline that we're supposed to. Amanda was in the bar every night for at least two or three weeks to make sure all of our bartenders knew exactly when to stop serving alcohol, when everybody had to be out by. We followed every rule and regulation. And we haven't had any incidents of anything since that time. So I know you guys say you like to work with businesses. There, we've obviously been trying. We haven't had anything like bad marks against us. We haven't gone over hours, we haven't had loud music, we haven't had entertainment or anything like that. So I just think that we've been trying to do our part to do better. And I think it's fair if you guys consider that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Matthew Moore, to be followed by our final speaker, Sean Owens.
Welcome.
Hello, how's it going? I'm Matt, nice to meet you. That's, I'm Amanda's kid. I'm a host at the restaurant. I've been working there for about a year and a half now. And there's a lot of people that will come up to the restaurant already, like Megan said, drunk, and they'll sit. I'll have them sit down on their chairs, actually, because if they're, and I'll get them some water or something, kind of help them out, and they'll end up throwing up. And then if we get penalized for something like that, it's, it's really, really sad to see something like that happen because that whole, all those people here, it's like a family for me. And I've been through a lot with family issues already. And to have another, like, team come up with you on top of like my mom, who's been through a lot and has shown me, like, you can do anything. Like, I really believe in this restaurant. And if you could give all of us a chance, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our final speaker is Sean Owens.
Welcome.
Trying to pull up everything I had written down. My name is Sean Owens. I was the head security guard at the bank for probably the last two and a half years, I would say. I'm gonna start off by saying, the bank is a historical building. So just by saying that, and the people who live in this city automatically want to come to this location. They automatically want to see the safe, or they want to just come see the building itself, read the signs, anything like that. Our capacity for every club night was always good. I can't think of not one incident or that was reported of my knowledge that we went over capacity. Although the bank is a smaller location, and every angle is a different capacity, we still kept that up. The music levels, from my knowledge, was good. The bank is famous for, one of their margaritas is the bank drink. So even as we was closed since whatever time it was that we was shut, that's all people come for. It's, you know, the, the seat of historical building, the food. And if you guys haven't tried the food, go on and go get some, you know, this weekend with your family. Our closing time was actually always fifteen minutes before all the other clubs. So while we kicking everybody out and getting everybody to clear our location, it was, like I said, fifteen minutes before. So by the time our club was closed, all the other clubs is just now getting out. So by them walking, because we're in the middle, by them walking by us, everything automatically gets blamed for us. There was a time that the officers asked us at the end of the night just to get the people just off our grounds. And then there was a time that told, they asked us to clear the sidewalk. Anything, any cop or anybody asked, we made sure it happened in the correct form, even if they were standing there or not. Most of our calls to the cops was because they asked. So if it's somebody who wouldn't get our property, wouldn't clear the sidewalks, it always, it didn't have to be fights or drinking too much or throwing up. It was simple things. So most of our calls came from simple things because we were trying to follow and help out the law and make sure we was doing our job. And, but every other club, I, obviously, you guys know what clubs, bars is out here, they have way more incidents. Police show up all the time, even since we've been closed. I know you guys should see the reports, so I don't really have to like notice, I mean, say it, but the cops and the ambulance stay there all the time, all week. And even when our capacity did start, we barely had incidents. And like I said, the incidents that we did have were besides the shooting, I'm gonna get to that if I have time. But besides that, it was to call them to help us so we can make sure we're doing our job and to clear them off the sidewalks and make sure nothing else get blamed on us. I'm gonna go back to the investigator who came. I was there that night. The guy was in there taking pictures of females. And it shows on camera, it shows everything else. And to my knowledge, that's way inappropriate for any club, a bar, a restaurant, anywhere you go with your family, especially if multiple females is coming up to us, like stating that this guy is making them feel uncomfortable. Never threatened, never said we was gonna beat him up, nothing like that. He had a phone, and doing this to females, that's, in my knowledge, is wrong. The shooting, I was there at the shooting. One of the victims, the man who died was my brother. The fight wasn't, it wasn't a fight, it wasn't an argument. The shooter had an issue with another guy who worked in Old Town. So like you said, you seen the video. I don't know how much you seen of it, but you would see that it was an argument. You would see that the guy who got shot and the guy who pulled the trigger was in the club an hour previous before the shooting. And no arguments, nothing. One guy from a different location came from the street, and there was nothing we can possibly do. We had fifteen minutes before we was closing on a Sunday, and it happened. Like I said, I was there, one of the victims, and my brother was shot and killed. There was the second shooting. They saying that it was in our back parking lot when it was in Penny Pickles' parking lot. So anything that's around the bank, I feel like we're targeted. It can be another fight. It can be another fight, it can be across the street, it can be down the street on the bridge. Somehow, it always leads to us. There's one incident that happened, the police was chasing a guy, and he had like jumped off the bridge or something, but he ran by the bank. The cops even questioned us on that, because they felt like he came from our location when he did, and he ran by our location. Two more things. I just feel like the cops is a bigger piece and part of this.
Your time's up.
Situation. They, uh, the shooting, they didn't come at least until 20 minutes after the shooting.
Your time's up.
All right, for sure. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I believe we may have one more speaker?
Yes, we do. Last speaker is Ryan Parent.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay. My name is Ryan Parent. I'm one of the owners of the bank. So you guys have asked some questions. Yes, our position is the 2012 minor modification that was filed by Craig was for live entertainment and a mistake was made on it. That modification had an exorbitant amount of mistakes made on it. It took the bank's 47-type liquor license, stated it had a 41. It had conditions of approval in it that Craig and his employees must attend meetings that were five years in the past. The entire document was just a block copy from the 2007 CUP that he had. The approval of that document was done in less than a day. So it seems to me that if Patrick Richardson wanted to make a 26-hour change to the operating hours, the process would have taken longer. More care would have been put into that document. So our position has always been, there was just a mistake made. And I realize Ms. Petrusis was trying to claim that it was done on purpose. Doesn't seem that way. The evidence doesn't support that that's, that it was done on purpose. A lot of the claims that have been made about the bank's disorderly house also have no support whatsoever. If you look at our calls for service, claims were made that we had DUIs. Public intoxications were rampant caused by the bank. Understanding that calls for service aren't the complete picture, but they're a darn good gauge as to what happens at the bank. We have no DUIs. None were reported on our calls for service. We had two public intoxications. We provided other calls for service into evidence, not to show that there were places worse than us, but there were other places where that was reported and taken into account. Most other businesses had way more than two. They had nine, six, eight, 11. We had two. Our calls for service show we actually were a fairly responsible business when it came to serving alcohol. The back parking lot that everybody keeps bringing up, there was a problem in the back parking lot. According to the city, they contacted the man, our management company. They had an issue. It wasn't our parking lot. It was owned by our landlord, but it wasn't ours. So we took it over. It was a problem the city had, so we solved that problem for the city. We put our own people back there, and immediately, there's other tenants that will testify to that if ever need be. But that parking lot was cleaned up. There was no more bottles back there. There was no more drug trafficking. There was no more sex, no more defecation going on. That parking lot was a mess. And we fixed it. And we fixed it to show the city that we're part of the solution, not part of the problem. When we first started running nighttime entertainment in 2020, according to the Sheriff's Department, the city requested that businesses close early in Old Town at midnight because they were worried what was coming into Temecula from other cities, because other cities were closed. We closed at midnight. We continued to close at midnight for another six to seven weeks. Other businesses in Old Town stopped doing that within two weeks of that request. We didn't. Any request that's ever been made of the bank, we've actually fulfilled. We've tried to contribute as best we could to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. To be labeled with what we've been labeled with is just unfair, and there's been really no evidence support. There's been claims made. People have given their opinions, the murder that took place. Mr. Stewart, you said you saw the video. It wasn't our fault, so to even use it and bring it up in a situation like this is unconscionable to me. We had nothing to do with it. We were victims as well. Obviously, we didn't suffer like the family of the person who was killed or the other people who were shot, but we suffered for it. That was somebody that we knew. He didn't work for us. We had gotten rid of him six months prior. But that should be irrelevant. He was a patron, and something awful happened to him, and we had nothing to do with it. The shooting that was prior to that, that Thanksgiving Day weekend, there was no evidence collected from the bank. We have 21 cameras. The police collected not a drop of video footage. They didn't interview our bartenders. They didn't interview anybody else. They asked one of our security, who was in that back parking lot. He refused to talk to the cops. We fired him immediately for that. It was horrific to us that one of our people wouldn't talk to somebody. He didn't see anything, but because he didn't cooperate, we got rid of him. We were very proactive and reactive to anything that was brought up to us. So I've only got 24 seconds, but it's just not fair. What, how we've been portrayed and what's been said about us just isn't true. You asked questions about why didn't we do something about it. We did. We offered, even in an email, Craig offered, we'd be happy to come in. We'd be happy to discuss an option. We'd be happy to fill something out. Well, we're just requesting, realizing there was a mistake made, we're requesting a staff review. Let's work together to get something done. I realize time's up, so. But if you guys have questions, I know you guys have questions, ask.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comment portion. Okay. Thank you, Madam Deputy City Clerk, for that. So there'll be no more public comments. At this time, we'll move to offer rebuttal, I guess, for the public comments. So we'll call the attorney for the city to respond to any public comments. You have five minutes. Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move to the attorney for the bank to respond to public comments. You have five minutes. Okay, welcome.
Thank you, Honor. You've heard from Mr. Patience, Ms. Lane, as to the efforts they made to solve the problem. They did go to the city. They both did. They did ask for meetings. They weren't given. In his testimony, Mr. Watson said, you indicated that code enforcement reaches out to owners, meaning owners of the property, owners of the business, to act collaboratively. Did you reach out to the owner, a phone call, or something that isn't an enforcement letter? Answer, no, we didn't. The entire responsibility is not on the property owner or on the business owner. The city has the responsibility too. Mr. Watson testified that it's the city's attitude that, and Mr. Cole testified that the citations are a tool. That's what they are. And what it's a goal, to get compliance. They got compliance on the noise issue. Over a year before, the recommendation to revoke the permit was made, presented to the ALJ. They cooperated with the police. You just heard that from the public speakers. They closed early, and they continue to close early at the request of the PD. The other businesses stopped closing early. I would submit to you that you have a responsibility, yes, to uphold or reject. But fairness is involved in this too. If a business does something really wrong, and you revoke their CUP, you send a positive message from the city, a strong message, that you will not tolerate a house that will repute, or a place that has a lot of incidents directly related to that place. But when you uphold a permit revocation that's based on error, based on a cut-and-paste job, it's not just a technicality, and the court's not gonna look at it that way. City Riverside just got hit with a $1.5 million judgment on a situation that occurred here in Temecula. And that's the attitude of courts and juries. I would encourage you to listen to what the business owner said, listen to what the property owner said, and cut off the damages. Don't uphold this permit revocation. Stop the damages from increasing today. This is not a good case to take to court. I understand how councils think. I know you want to uphold your staff. But it's also your job to oversee your staff. I don't mean micromanage. But when you get evidence that your staff has not performed the way they should have performed, you need to act on that. And the way you act on it, I would suggest, is you do not rubber stamp, and I don't think you would. I'm not suggesting you would, but you do not say, yeah, you made a lot of mistakes, but yeah, we're gonna revoke it because you've said it and so forth. Don't do that, and don't do that to the city. You don't need a $1.5 million judgment against the city of Temecula. I'd have been saying that's what it would be. I have no idea what the outcome of a court proceeding will be, but there will be a court proceeding. And I've seen a lot better cases than this one. Costs cities a lot of money. This is not a good case to take before a court. It just isn't. There's too many errors. There's too many mistakes. And say, oh, yeah, they had 100 sites, they didn't do anything. And this information that their previous attorney said would hurt your case? The only thing I can think of was, he was told like we were told in the Army, you don't have to obey an unlawful order. And these folks believed that this was an unlawful modification. And I can only assume that's what their attorney was thinking when he said, you'll hurt your case because you don't have to comply with an unlawful order. And if the permit were issued in error and the mistakes were made in error, I'm sorry, I heard what the city attorney said. I respectfully disagree, as a former city attorney myself. It's not gonna fly. It's just not going to. Thank you for your time, and I don't know if I need to officially do this. I did it in my email to the city attorney. I'm moving these, this document, points presented by the bank to the mayor and city council, city of Temecula, and evidence. And it cites the transcripts of the hearing, chapter and verse. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now extend five minutes to the attorney for Zip Third to respond to public comments if they wish.
Thank you. I will. So I want to address something that was brought up by Carmen, property owner on Front Street, by, which tied into something Mr. Stewart raised, and which tied into something that the mayor raised. So Mr. Carmen's essential point is, don't hang the property owner because of the tenant. And in that context, the mayor quoted this language from the code. "The city council review of the appeal shall be limited to determining whether the evidence received at the revocation hearing supports the findings and decision of the planning commission." Well, the evidence at the hearing clearly does not support the findings of the planning commission. If you compare the hearing to the planning commission, there's a fundamental change. The planning commission said there's only one permit holder. The city went to trial, represented, and the administrative law judge found there were two permit holders. I showed that to you. You don't have to take my word for it. I showed you. The city took that position, and for this planning commission to say, well, we don't like that, we're gonna throw that out, choose your adjective, but it's not allowed by the law, I gave you the case law in the appeal. You can't change the rules after the game has been played. It's ridiculous. Sorry, but I feel very strongly about that one. Frankly, I'm offended by it. It's absurd. But, and it's, it's just, this is not one where a lawyer is coloring it or shading it. It's right there in the English language. Yes, two permit holders. Yes, the word yes. And then the administrative law judge says, I agree. Now, Ms. Fox is an excellent lawyer, and she can disagree with the position the city took. But she, but the findings are not supported. The planning commission is out of sync with the revocation hearing, with the evidence at the revocation hearing. You can correct that. Now, here's what Mr. Carmen brought up. Don't hang the property owner for the conduct of the tenant. If you do have two permit holders, and if the other critical issue is, can the property owner be responsible, is the property owner responsible for the tenant? The record shows here that the permit holder, the property owner, is not responsible for the tenant. And nobody, not Ms. Petrusis, who did a very good job for her client, she has never said they're responsible. What she says is, all they're entitled to is 45 days' notice. Now, Mr. Watson, you have a whole procedure here to be business-friendly, right? Is that business-friendly to tell the property owner, you got 45 days' notice and we're gonna revoke this permit? And as to you also? That position is absurd, frankly, if, if the city is as it holds itself out, business-friendly. There's nothing friendly about that. There's no evidence supporting revocation as to the property owner. Those two issues that the, that the administrative law judge said were critical, specifically two permit holders, and is the property owner responsible for the tenant? Can the property owner be held responsible? Those are both overwhelmingly in favor of the property owner. Now, it is true, it is true, that if the tenant leaves, the conditional use permit will run with the land. The tenant is leaving by a stipulated judgment. This is not iffy. There is a judgment. If the tenant files another bankruptcy, you can go into bankruptcy and enforce the judgment. We got the last bankruptcy dismissed. If we have to, we'll do it again. But let me go back to the code, because the mayor was very wise to jump on the code. Review of the appeal limited to this determination, whether the evidence received at the revocation hearing supports the findings and decision of the planning commission. How can that be if the planning commission disregards what the city itself says at the hearing? When it says there are two permit holders, and when there is no evidence against this permit holder? And the running with the land, even if you say, okay, it only runs with the land, this is where your point comes in, Mr. Stewart. City has the power, right in its code, to modify this permit. And you could absolutely affirm the planning commission as to the tenant and overrule it as to the landlord. I know my time is up, but I'm right on the button again, Mr. Mayor.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you much for all of the comments, the public comments, as well as the rebuttals from the attorneys. Okay, we're gonna now move to opportunity for, oh, I'm sorry. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point a clarification for the record, several items. First off, there was offered during the presentation by Zip Third Investments a stipulation and unlawful detainer. That is not in the record before you, so that should not serve as a basis for your determination. Secondly, there was continuous, continuous reference to the video of the shooting that occurred outside the bank in their patio area. That, again, is not in the record, and that should not be part of your determination. That should not be considered in your decision about whether or not to uphold the determination of the planning commission to revoke the CUP. Also, Mr. Penman asked for his presentation of points that he gave to the assistant city clerk to be part of the record. They are not part of the record. They are argument. They are for information purposes. Each of the council members had that to help them follow along with his argument, and they will remain received, but they are not part of the record.
Okay, thank you very much.
May I have 10 seconds on one?
We're, we're gonna move, we're gonna move on. Thank you. We're gonna move on. Thank you. Okay, so it's opportunity for us now to have some dialogue. Before we do that, before I open it up to my colleagues, I just want to read the recommendation from the agenda. It says that the city council conduct a public hearing in the matter of the revocation of conditional use permit, otherwise known as CUP, for the operation of the bank. Consider the proposed decision of the Office of Administrative Hearing Officer as adopted with modification by the planning commission, and render a decision upholding or denying the proposed decision of the planning commission revoking the CUP. So we've done that. I'd like us to try to keep our comments and questions to that, keeping that in mind. So at this time, I'll go ahead and open it up to my colleagues for comments. Anyone would like to jump in and go first?
I'll go first.
Sure.
So as a business owner and as a commercial property owner, I feel for both of you guys. I mean, I understand your arguments. I understand what the dilemma that is before us. So I, I look at the property, or the, the business owner, and I just know me, myself, as a business owner, if I'm getting a citation from the city, I'm at the front door of the city and making sure I'm not getting another one. the city and making sure I'm not getting another one. And so I don't care who I have to run through. I'm running to somebody to make sure I got all my information, all my ducks in a row. And if they told me that my CUP says you're supposed to close at a certain time, I would have filed for a, a, a CUP correction, or whatever it's called, amendment. I would, I would definitely make sure my business was in compliance. I wouldn't, there's no way I'd get 100 citations. And then as a property owner, same thing. I, I don't feel you should be under the gun, basically, of what the tenant has done. But, but I really do believe a new CUP for a new tenant, because I do believe a CUP, even though it is a property right, it really does run with the business per se. The business is the one who applied for the CUP. That's why there is a CUP in place. And so a new business that would come in there, I don't think would have any problem getting another CUP. You know, the bank really is a landmark piece of real estate in the city of Temecula. So we, of course, want a business in there. We, you know, I don't, I don't see a problem with that at all. But it gives the city the opportunity to sit down with that new property, new business, and basically lay it out to them exactly what the CUP entails, you know? And I, I think it probably would have behooved you guys to actually sat down with a city official and, you know, when you first took over the business, and it got laid out right in front of you. This is what you can do, this is what you can't do. And I think that's why, you know, the, the, the CUP being revoked is not necessarily a death nail for the property, because I don't see that as a hindrance for the city to reinstate, give another CUP with pretty much the same conditions, only the parameters are set and we're going to make sure that new business understands you cannot go outside this. And so, so that's, that's my two cents on this thing.
Okay. Thank you very much. Open it up to any other colleagues that want to jump on in? All right, I'm going to just start picking, folks.
I guess just to hit on what you talked about, Mayor, to confirm, the planning commission on what we are discussing and what we will eventually vote on, the planning commission, I guess this may be a question for you, ma'am. The planning commission was allowed to modify the judgment by the ALJ decision, but the city council is not allowed to modify the judgment by the planning commission. Is that what I am understanding?
The planning commission was allowed to look at the ALJ's decision and make modification, which it did do. You can review the decision of the planning commission and the ALJ, and you can either confirm the revocation or overrule the revocation, and you could make some modifications to those, depending on what those are.
Okay. That is, I think that clarifies what we were trying to clarify earlier. I mean, there's so much here. I think it's hard to, I don't think any of us up here would hold the business, the bank, liable for the actions of the customers and patrons that attended the bank, right? And just as we wouldn't hold the property owner accountable for the actions of the tenant. So that, and for me up here, I am not, whatever happened outside of the bank in the parking lot, that has no decision or should have no decision on the bearing of what we are voting on today. The hard part for me is the 100-plus citations that the bank received after it was notified that it was in violation. They continued to receive these violations. So regardless of what happened outside with the shootings, all of that has, has nothing to do in my mindset of this either revoking of the CUP or not. But we do have to hold the business liable for their actions, not the actions of the customers. And we do have to hold those that need to be held accountable, need to be held accountable. But again, there's a lot, and it's hard from a government's perspective on how much do we take over businesses? What does this say to new business owners coming in? How much of it goes on the planning commission or even the city? If we don't want businesses open late, isn't that up to the city creating ordinances to not be open late or up to the planning commission to not hand out CUPs that are past curfew that they want to set? So there's also, there's responsibility on our end up here, as well as the planning commission, when we hand out these permits and CUPs, to not go against, I guess, what the city wants Old Town to be. So there's a lot of responsibility on all the parts in this, in this discussion we're having, but I guess I'm just interested to see what you guys all think. And now that we know that we can modify the actions set forth by the planning commission, I think that may change things, but I'm interested to hear what you all have to say.
Councilmember Alexander.
Okay, so there, I was able to obviously ask several questions during this meeting. However, you know, I think we just keep hitting the same thing, 100-plus citations. I don't know how many times we have to continue to say that, but that, that's huge for me. You know, again, having been in law enforcement previously as well, you know, and going to a place and looking at giving citations out, that's just unprofessional, that you would not pay all of the citations yet continue to even come to us as city council members to either the dais or even ask for a meeting. And that's another thing, I'm surprised that neither one of you had come to any of us because if there was a problem, I am 100% sure we could have sat down and discussed that. So I don't even know why that wasn't done either. That's another one. Because I have sat down with plenty of business owners where we were able to talk about things going on and any issues, and we were able to clear those up. The other thing I'm looking at is, let me see, I think I hit most of them. The other, only other thing is really looking at the property for Zip Third. My understanding is that there were notifications that were received. The CUP does go along with property. I just wish that there would have been better communication between your property manager and yourself, sir, but at the same time, you are the property owner. And I do have compassion for you. I understand, but, you know, I think kind of like Councilmember Stewart had said, you know, there is something possibly that we can discuss, but right now, this is what's at hand as far as looking at the, the commission, that we have to basically make, say yes or no.
Okay. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, 100-plus citations is kind of where I'm stuck as well, because after the first one, 10, 15, 20, 25, 50, 75, 100, it just seems like no one really paid attention to those. But I'm also struck by, I'm still stuck on the error, or, you know, the property owner and the bank says it wasn't an error, but the city, it was an error, but the city says that it wasn't regarding the hours of operation, but it still took the city nine years not to enforce those hours, if that's a correct statement. And so I'm delighted to hear that we can make some modifications potentially to the ruling, because I'd be in favor of that. But if I can get some answers to the hours of operations from 2008 or 2012 to 2021, and why we didn't enforce that or correct the property owner on those hours of operations in between that time, it seems like we waited till 2021 to start issuing those citations.
Okay. Before we move on, would we be able to address Councilmember Brown's question about that?
Certainly. So a few things there. First off, the conditional use permit, which has the conditions of the hours of operation from 2012, is, is the operative document, and that document was not challenged. So generally speaking, for code enforcement, what you find, and I think in this case, the record also establishes, that you enforce things when you learn there is a problem. And what happened here is we learned there, the city learned there was a problem when the Temecula police officer informed code that they had a problem at the bank. So the fact that you didn't enforce, maybe they were operating, but you hadn't been put on notice there was a problem, there isn't any acquiescence or waiver of those conditions because that did not occur.
Does that satisfy you right now?
So much, yes.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make some brief comments, and then if we need follow-up and discuss potential modifications. You know, I think the fact that, you know, we are a fairly business-friendly city, you know, is, it's important, and Old Town in and of itself is a testament to that. Like, it was clearly designed to be a business district, and it's thriving because of it. But that doesn't mean we should ignore things that happen at a business just to maintain a business-friendly sort of atmosphere. Public safety, the amount of investment we've spent down here is significant to, to deal with some of the issues that we're seeing down here. And, you know, when we talk about public safety, it's, it's obviously our visitors are important, but it's, it's the residents, right? It's the people that live here, and that quality of life is important. It's important to have a thriving downtown that's responsible and that's an enjoyable place for, for everyone to go to. And sort of after taking in the totality of all this evidence, it's really hard to ignore that there are problems from the bank. The actions that I've seen in the evidence, is that what is good for business in our city? Is that good for other businesses in our city? I would argue that it's not. There were options available to the applicants for quite a while, and they didn't take those. I've fielded calls for meetings for significantly less than something like this, and I heard nothing from, from anyone. So that was, is a little bit concerning to me. You know, I think when we talk about, you know, what are our actions here today, what does that say to other businesses? You know, I think it sends a message that, you know, a thriving downtown isn't necessarily just drinking until 2:00 AM, right? Like, we have a theater, we have like a world-class theater steps from this historic corner in our downtown. And so I think it's important that, you know, when we talk about what makes a downtown successful, it's more than just drinking till 2:00 AM. There is so much more that goes into it. So, you know, for me, the, the, the nature of the, of the, of the issues that we've seen, sort of, you know, pointing fingers at Mr. Puma who's not here, and he didn't read it, and this, that, and the other thing, it's just a mistake. I didn't see that in the evidence. So I was certainly, I guess, interested in hearing what some of the, some of the concessions might be with something like this, but I would contend that we would uphold the planning commission's decision straight away. Councilmember Kalthus?
For a point of clarification, I think a discerning thing for me has been the two permit holders subject throughout this hearing. And just to confirm for clarification, one CUP even prior to the planning commission's hearing at the administrative law judge, was there two permits? Was there always only one? What is the argument, two versus one? What's the, I guess, factuals behind that?
So the issue about the conditional use permit is a legal issue, and so the planning commission, in its resolution, modified the finding of the administrative law judge. There has always only been one CUP, and that CUP was issued to Puma Corp. And that is a correct interpretation of both the factual setting and legally how a CUP operates. When you get a CUP as a tenant, you have to have the written consent of the property owner. And then there are provisions that were complied with here when you revoke, that you also would give notice to the property owner that was done here. So I'm hopeful that that responds to your question, but if not, please let me know.
That absolutely does. Thank you. And to confirm, if it is upheld and the CUP is revoked, the property owner can then get new tenants, and those new tenants can reapply for a new CUP. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else like to follow up?
I would just like to say, you know, just the fact that this is the very first time in 32 years we've done this. And that's why if, if there's some procedural issues that need to be addressed going forward, we're definitely going to do that, because this is really our first time doing this. So it's, it's a very, very unique thing in the city of Temecula, and we don't do it lightly. That's why it took so long for us to pull this trigger, because we wanted, we wanted enough evidence to make sure we were doing the right thing also. So it's not with ease we, we do this at all, so.
I would certainly agree. This is probably the most difficult meeting that I've been a part of. I just would like to say, and maybe if my colleagues have anything, but, you know, any action here today, if we were to uphold the planning commission, it certainly doesn't shut the bank down. And I, there's an opportunity for the bank to potentially reapply. There's an opportunity for a new tenant to reapply. And as far as the property owner, while I understand the concern, I do think that, you know, a new tenant at some point would easily be able to apply for a CUP, and, and you would still have that right as a property owner. I guess that's all I have for now. Anything else? Okay. Does anyone like to make a motion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we uphold the planning commission.
A second now.
Okay, so we have a motion to uphold the planning commission decision and a second by Councilmember Alexander. Okay, and that motion passes 5-0. That's it for the meeting today. I'm going to adjourn to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council on Tuesday, April 11th, 2023, at 4:00 PM. We're adjourned.